All right, good evening. It's now seven o'clock and we have a busy agenda tonight for our regular meeting of the Orient Township Planning Commission. And we also have a joint public hearing scheduled for 7:05 this evening. And so we're going to jump right into our regular agenda real quick for the, again, the regular meeting of the Orient Township Planning Commission. If I could have a roll call, please.
Nancy.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
St. Henry.
Here.
Diamond.
Here from the Drinky Fountain.
Walker.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Garrus.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to the clerk, ma'am clerk, if you'd like to open your meeting.
Yeah, we'll call our meeting to order the Orient Township Board of Trustees. Supervisor Chris Barnett.
Here.
Treasurer Donnie Steele.
Here.
Trustee Mike Flood.
Here.
Trustee Brian Burney.
Here.
Clerk Penny Schultz, here. And trustee John Steimel is at the dais.
Here.
And trustee Julia Del Rempel is absent with notice. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Going back to our regular agenda, while we still have some time, item number three is the minutes. We have one set of minutes from February 20th, our regular meeting minutes from our planning commission on that date. Any discussion or any motion on those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted for the February 20th Planning Commission meeting.
Motion's supported. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Excellent, our minutes are approved. Item number four is our agenda review and approval. There's a motion or discussion on the agenda?
Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Excellent.
Support.
Excellent. Motion's supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Excellent, our agenda is approved. Item number five then takes us to public comment, and this is for any non-agenda items. If there's any member of the public that has any items they would like to address to the planning commission, please step forward, state your name and address. And again, for items then not on the regular agenda, as will be timed, as I mentioned, a public hearing tonight, as well as items before us under new business. Any member of the public wish to speak on anything else? Excellent. All right, we'll save our comments, I guess, maybe for after later. Moving on then, item number six is our consent agenda. We have no items under that this evening, which takes us to item number seven, our new business, which I was hoping to get to before the other matter this evening, which is item 7A, which is ponds of Orient's site plan extension request. If the applicant is present, if you please step forward, state your name and address, and give us an overview of this request for your site plan extension, if you would.
Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Ted Farmer. I'm the attorney for Contour Development. I'm here to ask if you would please grant one more extension for the star of this project. Contour is very eager to begin it, is committed to it, and is heavily invested in it. We're down to one little detail that I've been working on, and I'm here tonight to tell you what I've been doing specifically to work on that. And that is over the backhorns of two of our neighbors' parcels. We need very small easements for sanitary sewer. And as I began working on that part of this, as drawings started coming together back last spring, I started looking at the necessary easements we needed to do that. I found the two owners of this parcel I needed to talk with, the owner of the Ammon Can parcel and the Lake Orient Plaza parcel owner, the Bootros Companies. I started contacting them. They asked questions. They had questions, of course, about whether this would affect grading, drainage, things like that. And we have a detention pond on our property, too, that we will need to maintain, too, but the Lake Orient Plaza uses that. On June 12th, the Bootros Companies contact that I was working with there asked for more information. By July 17, we actually had drawings done for the easements, and I was able to talk more specifically with her about these, again, and dress those with her. She wanted to see our site plan. We gave her her site plan. I did that. So on July 17, I'd reached out and actually had the easement drawings myself drawn. On July 20, I got these drawings from Noack and Fraus, I think, is it? Paul is here with me tonight, yep. We emailed those to Lake Orient Plaza. I invited them to talk to Paul about this. On August 9, I got lengthy questions from them. September 6, I emailed detailed answers to them about those things. And I've been in touch at this point now, also with the doctor who owns the other little building down the street, which is the other parcel that I just need a sliver of in the back of. But again, they haven't said no to this. It's just, I have done everything but camp on their doorstep and beg, and I'm about to do that, too. With the drawings completed, I worked with the township officials and your providers. I used your providers' sanitary sewer easements forms. I've drafted these easements. I've got them, to them with the drawings, and continue to try to get them to yes on them. I've actually now talked directly with Mr. Bootros, Ed Bootros, about this specifically. He's had some questions, some concerns, and I've addressed those. He's been very friendly with them. I just hadn't got the pen in their hands and got them to sign these. And I feel confident that I can get them to yes. I just haven't quite done that yet. So, other than that, this project is ready to go. We, I know you've seen the plans, and they're going to be beautiful condos. And I'm asking if you might please just give us one more chance to get this going.
Excellent. Thank you for the update on the project. It's a very detailed update. It's very helpful, you know, in our deliberations. With that, I'll open up to my fellow planning commissioners with their questions, comments. I mean, I'll have a few, and we can deliberate. With that, I'll open up to my fellow commissioners, comments, thoughts. I have some initial ones, I guess, with regards to, are you ready to go to market, again, for kind of number of public here and so forth that aren't familiar with the site plan? So then, should you be getting these easements as your plan is still moving forward, you know, in this construction season coming up? What is the kind of timeframe and so forth?
Paul, help me out here. Yeah, I think they're ready to put the shovel in the ground.
I'm actually, my name's actually Mike Pozolo, Design House Architecture, landscape architect for the project. Just to summarize, aside from the easements that we're talking about tonight, there's also, we have an engineering review back in. That's pending, based on updating our escrow account, which we will do ASAP. And first of all, I want to apologize for not showing up for last meeting. I'm not sure what happened. We had a miscommunication of sorts, but we're here tonight to rectify that. Easements, yes, they're being worked out. Our escrow account will be built back up. We'll get the engineering finalized. And other issues we've been dealing with were through a DTE. There were some power-up utility poles that had guy wires in inappropriate locations, and they were concerned about grading around existing utility poles. We have been dealing with them, getting those issues worked out. So it's just, a lot of things have been happening. Kmart went away. Hollywood Market went away, so there's been flux in that shopping center, so there's been some issues there. The easements are 10-foot easements, crossing the Kmart property and the adjacent dental property. Very small. We just need to get worked out. We're in control of those. Other issues, it's just a matter of timing, holidays, the past few months, and we're asking for another six months, just based on, we want the minimum possible to show you that we're still trying to move this forward. So I think it's a matter of logistics, getting things, getting everything in a row, and we are still willing to move forward at extremely fast pace at this point. We want to get the shovel in the ground ASAP, so.
Okay. Thank you for the update on that, so we can get kind of the whole picture on timing on that. Further, any comments from my fellow commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion or discussion.
Are there any, are there other alternatives other than the easements that you're requesting?
I just looked at them, I just looked at recently, and it seems like one can be maintained on the Kmart property away from the second dental office. But at this point, we're so far into it, it's just, it's just, we're there. We just need two people to sign on.
Would you like to see where those are?
No.
I think you remember from where the site is where the end.
Pictures are good.
Five feet, five feet base width, crossing the corner of a property.
Mr. Chair, I'd be in favor of granting one more six-month extension to the project, seeing as how there are other projects and other precedents been set in the township for one year. We typically provide one-year extensions, so this is in tune with that, and seeing with the information that's been presented to us tonight, that, you know, they're doing their due diligence on the project.
Okay, excellent. Motion for support?
Support.
Motion's support. Okay, some discussion from up here. I concur. Thank you for the detailed update. You know, if you come forth with, you know, the honesty, work diligently with us, you know, we try to work with you as well at times, if, you know, appropriate, and we appreciate, you know, you coming forth. Sounds if you're working diligently in closing in, then, you know, we'll continue to work with you and see what we can do. With that, any public discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
My only concern is that, according to my file, that we granted the, we conditionally approved this in February 2016. So we're now three years, in excess of three years, if I do my math right. And this seems to be dragging on forever. I guess I would, I would probably vote with, with the motion maker, but I'm, this is my last one. I won't do it again, to let you know.
I know there's some changing in professionals on the project, and I think ownership and different things, and difficult sites. So, not to diminish, we do need to look at the clock and be cognizant, so, but with those factors duly noted, though. Any other further discussion?
Just clarification, the six months would be to August 15, 2019?
Correct. Any public discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll go with the roll call, please.
Daniel?
Yes.
Garrus?
Yes.
Crobs?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
St. Henry?
Yes.
Steimel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Motion's there.
Thank you. Don't take this the wrong way. We don't want to see you again for that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. With that, I appreciate the viewing public bearing with us an extra few minutes here. It's now, they'll pass 7:05, and so we're going to go ahead and go into the joint public hearing with this Township Board of Trustees, before we adjourn our meeting, just so folks are aware. Of course, the public hearing name implies, this is, you know, the public's opportunity, once they've heard a chance from the petitioner, to give their feedback to us, as well as the Township Board, as it's a joint public hearing, and an opportunity for the Township Board to weigh in on the subject matters. It's in its public hearing stage. Also, so you are aware, and as you may have seen on the agenda, this item is also before this body, the Planning Commission, under our regular agenda, our next item under new business 7B. So there will potentially be action, or at least further discussion, and more discussion deliberation on our end during that portion of the meeting when we come back to it. So just so you're aware. So I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our regular meeting, and go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:13. We'll call it. And this is, again, you know, to be exact, a public hearing with the Township Board of Trustees, and this is for item PC 2019-06. And this is Silverbell Point, which is a planned unit development. It's located on four parcels. These are all vacant parcels on south of Silverbell Road, on the east side of Jocelyn Road. Sidwell numbers 0933-201-001, 0933-128-001, 0928-379-001, 0928-451-001. And the applicant is Franklin Ridge Homes LLC. And what they're proposing is to rezone these properties that are currently zoned suburban estates, our SE, into the planned unit development. And so that unit calls for 54 single-family home sites as part of that planned unit development. And with that, we'll go ahead and invite the petitioner to come forward and give us an overview of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Andy Millia, Franklin Property Corporation. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Franklin Ridge. The owner of the property, David Stoyer, is here as well, as is our civil engineer, John Thompson, and Ryan Cooper Smith of our office as well. We appreciate this opportunity. We have a very brief PowerPoint to give you an overview, and then we look forward and welcome all of your questions. As I mentioned, the development team, we also engage the services of King &amp; McGregor, our wetland consultant, because wetlands will be a significant part of the discussion tonight. The property is outlined in yellow, and as you indicated, it's on the east side of Jocelyn Road, south of Silverbell, north of Brown, and the east side of the property is Mud Lake. It's 74 acres in totality. It is a, it's a beautiful piece of property, but it's also a challenging piece of property. Issues that we need to deal with are natural resources such as the wetlands. There's power lines on the west side of the property, and there's a railroad track. We've been working on this for the last several years on it, and most recently have been working with your staff, your planning consultant, and we've had a couple work-study sessions with some members of the planning commission as well to get some further input. So we're excited to present tonight.
Just blinked off there.
Here's a close-up of the property. The portion to the south is wetlands, area of the portion to the north is wetlands, and of course, the Mud Lake and portions of the east are wetlands. The wetlands create some challenges for the property, but also create beauty on the property. What we're proposing is to develop, just in the upland area, very small portion of fill on the wetlands, and then the theme of the development is preservation, is to preserve the majority, or preserve just about all of the wetland areas in their natural state. Our objective is to develop this into a 54-home community on 74 acres. 54 home sites on 74 acres, which is just under .73 homes per acre on a gross basis. That's including the wetland area. It'll be a high-end community, be bringing additional first-class homes to Orient Township, and we're doing it in a cluster development, in a PUD to preserve the wetland area. What we're proposing, and wanted to do, because density will be discussed tonight, is to talk about, we're proposing to develop it under PUD, under the current master plan for this property. Current master plan is a single-family, medium-density, which allows up to three units per acre on the usable upland area. Our engineers have calculated that there are 28 usable acres of upland area, using a 20% right-of-way factor, or an 80% efficiency factor, gives you 22.4 net usable acres. Net usable acres multiplied by permissible zoning, a permissible density of three units per acre would allow up to 67 units per acre, excuse, 67 total units on the entire parcel. Our proposal is to do 54 units, or 13 units less than the 67. Here is the site plan. All the homes that you see are in the upland area. It's, there are 50 homes in the main portion of the development, along the development road, and then four homes in the upland area on the north side of the development, the south side of Silverbell. If you look at the bottom right corner, there's also a portion of upland that we could put houses in, but we chose not to do that and concentrate the development in the main areas. Everything that you see in white outside of the lots would be protected conservation area and conservation easement for the wetland areas. And all the outer ring of the lots are very deep lots. Those contain wetlands as well. That would be protected in a conservation easement as well. So the homes would only be built on the upland portion of the lots. The couple of the benefits and the features of this PUD are the preservation of the woodlands, preservation of the wetlands, and preservation of some of the other natural features. Because the lots are so large, we can preserve landmark and specimen trees. We will preserve the wetland area, and it's been carefully designed to include, be just included in the upland area. As discussed, we're proposing 13 less homes. This would save on, just, if we go back and look at the site plan, we're just disturbing a minimal amount of the area with road right-of-ways and utilities, and the majority of the site is being protected. There'd be a reduction on the, because there's a reduction in only building 54 homes on a total of 74 acres, less infrastructure, less community services will be needed. This, we believe this does conform with the Orient Township master plan specifically for this site. This is an example of the quality and the type of home that could be built, generally two-story colonial homes, high-quality materials, in the range of 2,700 to 3,300 feet. There will be daylights and walkouts on the property to take advantage of the terrain overlooking the wetland area. Building envelopes are 3,000 to 3,600 feet. Generally, because they're two-story homes, the home and the garage will take up just over half of the building envelope, so there's a lot of flexibility in the envelope to do some front-entry garages, to do side-entry garages, and there's a lot of flexibility in that with a quality home. These are proposed to be 80-foot lots, so that could accommodate a home of this size and quality. And, yep, some of the, it was designed so that the property comes off of Jocelyn Road to the east of the existing railroad. Should be noted that the railroad is currently dormant, and so that doesn't come into play into this development, but we do have it coming off Jocelyn Road directly, so the entrance does not have to cross the railroad area. With that, I'm available to answer any questions of you or the public.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. With that, we'll open it up to the public. It's a public hearing, so we want to hear from you folks, so we'll ask you to come forward and state your name and address for the record. And given that we have a number of folks, and what the charter allows for, you'll be set at three minutes for your comments. We will try to keep to that, so that everyone has a fair amount of time to speak. So again, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. We'll take a tally kind of your various comments, and then, once we get through those, the Township Board will also have a chance to ask questions, and then we'll give the petitioner a chance to come back and, you know, address some of those and so forth. So we'll kind of keep track of those, and ask the petitioner to keep track as well. So, with that said, would ever like to be our first member to come forward? Please do so, and don't be nervous. We don't bite that hard. And if you have comments that mimic the folks before you, and you wanted to say, you know, I really concur with that, or want to add this, that's more than welcome, but this is your chance. We want to hear from you. So take your time and let us know your comments, questions, and so forth. I'll try to set up the timer
Sandydale 1558, Nancy G. I know most of you, not all of you. This lake is the reason I got involved in government 35 years ago, and I wrote at the current Wetlands Ordinance, the one before. And it was written based on the flooding problems in this area. I know you all know about the 1.9, or 1. CFS. We all know it's not, it's too fast for the area. But I have a couple of questions. One is where the sewers are coming from, especially for those four lots on Silverbell, because sewer doesn't go that far west. Second, that's going to cause, if they bring it in, off long Silverbell, that's going to cause it to pass some homes that aren't currently hooked up. Who's going to pay for them to hook up? Because you all know, they have to hook up if it's within 200 feet. My biggest concern, of course, is the flooding. Both Mud Lake and Carpenter Lake are known for flooding, and we had that flooding go up as far as over transformer boxes and people's yards. It is a significant concern, and a real concern. We had the flooding fixed by a developer who developed on the other side of Jocelyn, because he was able to open up the drainage. But our concern, obviously, is going to be having impervious surfaces with stormwater. I know there's going to be detention ponds that will be going into the shallow part of the lake. And if you look at the maps, that lake's bigger than it used to be. What's, where they're showing that edge of Mud Lake, I think you all know where it crosses the road on Silverbell. That didn't use to be lake, and it's because that area is starting to get more and more stormwater. That's the biggest concern in this area, is what's going to happen to that stormwater. So I'm hoping you're taking that into account. When I did the Wetlands Ordinance, I think it was in 1988, it was based on a study done by the Clint River Watershed Council that was done jointly with Oakland Township. If you haven't seen it, I know it's in this building somewhere, and I'm sure you can see it. You'll see what the problems are in this area. But the brown drain, you all know, is an old Chapter 9 drain. They're limited to $1 million to clean it every year. It never gets cleaned, because you can't do it for $1 million. So we all pay for something we don't get. Other than that, I'm pleased to see the developer's concern and the fact that he's sticking to the SE. This is what the reason this property was master planned SE, was so we would get that density down. And I appreciate the fact that the developer's doing what they're doing. I know we're looking at something similar to Keatington. That said, although my neighborhood is R2, nobody has an R2 lot. And the trend in the area has been for bigger lots, not smaller. The 80 acres next door were developed with, I think there's like six lots, because of the concerns about the lake. They were really, really sensitive to it, so they did a lot split as opposed to a development. But I would really ask you to look at what's actually in the area, because the trend is not R2 lots. My neighborhood, we're R2, but the lots are at least 19,000 square feet. They're not 10,000. Thank you.
Right on the nose. Look at that, professional. Take notes, everyone. No. Thank you.
See, we have a comedian up here today.
That's right.
Hi, my name is Bridget Wilson. Excuse the cold. I'll say ditto for three minutes, if that'll help. But I do appreciate this opportunity to speak with the Planning Commission about the rezoning of these four vacant lands. This evening, I like to focus on two of the rezoning elements that I took from the Wetlands Ordinance, the current one, and from the 2015 master plan. The first one of the plan states that the... That's going to be my key point, because of where I live, off of Kinmount Drive. And the natural features of the area, which is, obviously, the wetlands and their sole purpose, or major purpose of flooding. So, the proposed rezoning will impact transportation system by adding approximately 108 cars to an area that, right now, I have to wait for people to let me in and out to turn onto Jocelyn Road. So 108 cars, and that's all going to be within two and a half miles of eight of the identified 10 highest-traffic incident intersections in Orion Township. The next part is wetland mitigation, which I've not heard anything about. However, any of the impacted areas, the creek that is in the back of my property flash floods routinely, and it floods into our property and beyond. And this is only going to increase when you shift any areas. And the retention ponds, they're all great ideas, however, it does not stop the actual impact of what is going to occur for our land, and then the land of the people that are potentially going to be buying these. The last element is public interest, and that goes to the ordinance. And whether or not the public has the interest for this, has the interest for this high-density housing. In your master plan, they were asked, the top two things that they loved about Orion Township was access to Park and Recreation, it's 74%, and access to open space, it's 65%. Their least favorable features of Orion Township was traffic congestion at 80%. Inadequate road maintenance at 55, and new development not consistent with community wants and desires at 42%. I do know the traffic, the roundabouts, those have relieved things on the Baldwin side, not the Jocelyn side. And I'd also like to point out, in that same question, that the actual limit housing, the limited housing option was actually one of the least, least favorite features at 4%. Nobody was interested in this. When they were asked about the importance of housing, only 9% felt it was very important for Orion Township to address single, senior, or affordable town, or affordable housing. So the conclusion, this area is a wetland. It's hope for songbirds and an ecosystem that we rely on to protect our current property. This land, if it has to be developed, please keep it where it's at with the current zoning, and then please use and enforce SMCOG's Low-Impact Development Manual that you referenced in your plan. 45% of the public from that 17, or 15 plan, said they have no interest in new residential development. The individuals who were interested, wanted to see, haha, thank you, development of at least one acre per land unit. We've also heard from a lot of our neighbors, we're going to be hearing from them, and their desire to keep the land undeveloped. I understand that. So we've spoken, and I'm really hoping that you all will hear us. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Gail Mayo at 3949 Mayo Drive. I live right off of Mud Lake. I agree with what the two ladies said before me. I brought up the Land Use Act that was passed, and the last sentence under the single-family medium-density definition says, "The correlation, correlating zoning classification is the SR Suburban Ranch zoning district with a minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet." I'd like to see lots, at least 3,000 square feet, if there is going to be homes there. I do not want any filling of the wetlands, or anything around there. I'd like to be able to have you preserve some of the forest. I think that's great. I have, there's deers living there, in addition to the songbirds and everything else. We do love that. And I would just also like to have something done to help improve the roads, especially Jocelyn Road, where they're planning to build the four homes. That's just crumbling. It's crumbling further down. And Silver Bell is crumbling. And then Jocelyn, of course, there is a traffic problem. I don't know if we can widen it, or if that's even something considered. I think if they build more homes there, then the lake water is going to go up, and it is going to be more of a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know how many people actually live around the lake, or next to the lake, or actually even walk through the woods. I didn't even know it got rezoned, but I know progress comes. I wish only Myers was on Brown Road. But there's, it's fed between three lakes, and a lot of developers don't know that. And we got two houses that are being built in between Hope Field and Kinmount that made Josie's Farm and many other houses just collapse. So, I don't know. It used to be, this used to be where living is vacation. It's becoming more of a hassle with all this development, and I just hope you guys understand and reinforce and make sure, make the best decision for what's right for the land and the ecosystem.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jessica Rico. I live at 1849 Kinmount, and I actually grew up in this area. I grew up on Carpenter and Mud Lake, and so I'm a lifelong resident. I spoke to Chris Bunch. He's the Executive Director of the Six Rivers Land Preservation, and he expressed serious concerns with any development in this area, partially because this is a watershed of Clinton River. And as you guys probably know, Clinton River is facing a lot of issues with development, and it's leading to, like, for example, the flooding we had a few weeks ago. My basement was flooded. Frankly, I think that this area cannot sustain, really, this kind of development. I do appreciate the developer's concern in trying to move things around, but at the end of the day, there's just no way not to deserve that area. I would be really interested in looking into a preservation easement, looking into crowdfunding for a preservation easement, and something to preserve what I think all of our neighbors here are very worried about this land turning into something that, this community is a beautiful wooded, forested, lake community, turning into something that it's not. Not to mention the traffic on Jocelyn Road. I also have, my only outlet is Jocelyn, like the other young lady that lives on Kinmount. I can't get out in the morning. 108-plus cars? I can't even imagine that kind of traffic right down the street from where I live, and having to look at the lakes that I grew up on being developed. There's a lot of concerns with this, and I do believe that it's not in the best interest of our township to have this built or rezoned. Thank you.
I'm concerned about a lot of things with this. First off, 54 houses, you're going to punch wells, or is it going to be city water? That's going to mess with all our water tables. We've already, you put in the wells, now I got to put in a well. I can't afford that. You put in sewers, then I got to put in sewers. My wife and I are both retired. It's ridiculous. Right now, the herons come back every year, they nest right behind my house. It's beautiful. We have mature trees, oak trees that are like three foot thick, just gorgeous. Any place that I've been to, they come and cut all the trees down and then build. Okay, these guys say they're going to keep it cool and not cut all the trees down. There's not enough land. I've hunted that, I've walked it. There's a dump back in there that probably they don't know about. There's stuff buried there, people dump tires back there. But it's beautiful, and there's not the land there. Right now, I can't walk in the back 30 feet of mine, I'll sink up to my ankles. I put a berm of dirt up against the back fence to keep it from flowing, to keep my dogs from getting wet. Otherwise, I would have, right now, 15 inches of water for my dogs to play in. Then there's the traffic. I can lay in bed and listen to a drag race coming right off my road trying to get out. They get a gap and they run. I hear brakes all day long. It's ridiculous. If you leave in the morning to take a kid to school, all the traffic. In the evening, all the traffic coming home. They're commuters. They do not care. They will run you over to go where they got to go. It's ridiculous. Park out there. The speeds are excessive with motorcycles, 80 mile an hour at different times, and I am not joking. You can hear them wrapping the gears all the way through there. Too much traffic, too much noise, not enough land for these houses. I'm on a half-acre with 1,500 square feet. On one side, I got about 10 foot to the neighbor. The other side, I got 20 feet. And look at these houses, colonial houses they're putting in, three of them on an acre? I don't know who's doing the math, but half-acre with 1,500 square feet, not gonna damn near touch each side? Somebody's got the calculations wrong. Thank you.
Hi. My name is James Wire. I live at 2006 Kinmount. The first question I have for the gentleman back here is, I noticed on his plan, his lots, and he even admitted that a lot of the lots, the back of the lots, were going to be in the wetlands. Well, this is private property that people are going to be owning. How can we ensure that they are going to continue to be wetlands? Now, I understand the Township master plan is not a strict code, but a guide. However, it states, "Much of the undeveloped land is heavily wooded or is wetlands, providing an ideal habitat for wildlife, and these large expanses of unspoiled lands help to impart the rural image the residents consider so appealing." The key here, term here, is unspoiled in the vacant lands. On page 27 of the plan, it says, "Many residents have been attracted by its lakes, wetlands, woodlands, rolling topography, and open spaces. These features are significant, not only because of their strong appeal to residents, but also because they constitute a functioning ecosystem that has been largely," again, unspoiled is the actual term, "by human activity. These particular lots are described as scrub-shrub wetlands, and are part of the upper Clinton watershed. Replacing these wetlands with the impervious services of pavement and buildings would degrade this watershed." The plan states, "The upper Clinton results show streams that are impacted to a greater level by development. Future development will push these streams almost to the non-supporting classification." In addition, Jocelyn Road already floods at Judah Lake, particularly at Hope Field Drive. The spoiling of these wetlands, and I'm using the master plan's own verbiage here, will contribute to an increase in stream flows following storms, as the ground will no longer be able to absorb runoff. The stream running adjacent to these parcels, under Jocelyn Road to Judah Lake, will be particularly affected. Section 5 of the plan concerns storm drainage and recommends low-impact development using techniques to minimize stormwater runoff, including the preservation of wetlands. The plan also states, quote, "Resoning or planned unit development proposals that would increase the density of development and population of the township should be discouraged," end quote. It encourages quality housing at low and moderate densities to maintain the rural, suburban character of the community. Again, I understand the township's master plan is not a strict code, but when it comes to these lots and the unique placement in the upper Clinton watershed as vacant wetlands, the plan should be followed. This rezoning is inconsistent with the plan and should be discouraged. Careful attention to township policy should be practiced by the Planning Commission. The planned unit, this planned unit development provides no recognizable benefit, is not consistent with the character of the adjacent areas, will degrade the road network to the point of inefficiency, and will impact the existing natural features, particularly the water absorption of the wetlands, the resulting storm runoff, and the impact on the upper Clinton watershed. These lots are vacant. Please keep them that way.
Are we able to ask questions?
Are you directing to us, and then we'll, I've been keeping tally, and then hopefully the applicant as well, and then be able to.
Annie Brunk, Nancy G. Lane. So I have a piece of property on the waterfront for Carpenter Lake. I recently purchased this four years ago. The listing for the property went as such, "No need to drive four hours to vacation in northern Michigan. Welcome to Lake Orion's best-kept secret. Perfectly situated on all-sports private lake. Enjoy sunsets every day with unobstructed views from every window. This home will offer you and your family year-round fun, just minutes away from anywhere you want, in the I-75 corridor." That's how this lake is. That's, that's the appeal. So when we get in our canoe or our kayak, and we kayak around the lake, that's what it feels like. It's up north. The development will inevitably change that. So I don't know the responsibilities, the overall responsibilities of the, of the Planning Commission. I do have some concern as to how the homes, the older homes, will fare in competition with these new developments. The, the folks on Mayo Drive, those developments went in, I suspect, at some later time, and I think that they were very thoughtfully planned, where they were larger plots, larger homes on these plots. They did it in such a way that the homes beautify the area. I do enjoy kayaking and seeing these nice, larger homes in the area. I think it's very appealing. I don't see how lots 1 through 13 are going to add any appeal to the lake. I think that'll be a problem. And, and I think that we should be very cautious to get into a vorbees lake situation. This lake, these lakes are very small, and they, they can't handle the additional 50 homes if these homes end up having access. I don't see, in the plan, where it specifies one way or the other, how these homes are going to impact the traffic on the lake. Will these homes have access to the lake? There's already two accesses to these lakes. Both Mud Lake and Carpenter Lake is affected by, by each other. So when I put a boat on Mud Lake, those boats can come over to Carpenter Lake, and vice versa. Now, as it is now, both of the accesses are on Carpenter Lake, and so we use a strait to go through to Mud Lake. How is this development going to impact that dynamic? I, I, I'm very concerned about that. I think that this is going to be a problem. To reinforce the, the other issue, such as drainage, my home, we just recently had about five inches of rain. I lost 15-foot of property because of this, because of this five inches. Now, it's down again, but every time the lake goes up five inches, that's what I lose. And my neighbors lose the same, the same amount. So it's very significant. At this point, I don't, I don't understand how, how this drainage is maintained, but we would definitely need a, a plan going forward to ensure that somehow this is maintained in a way, I mean, there's going to be a change, right? I'm, I'm concerned about that change. Is it going to be worse? We should be very mindful of that. Let me look at a couple of things. Everybody's mentioned the 5 o'clock traffic. Without a doubt, that's going to be a problem. I'm also concerned about the schooling. We're going to have potentially, if it's 54 homes, potentially two children per home. You know, you're going to have 100 extra kids in Carpenter School with the rezoning. That's a new thing, right? I mean, we just recently had this, this rezoning, where we had kids going, so on and so forth. So I think that that, that could be definitely a concern. Up north feeling, property values, I think we've covered that. Access to the lake, I would really like to know how many of these homes is going to have access to the lake, how the covenants are going to work? Are there going to be more boats? Are there going to be more jet skis? One boat on the lake is, is a plenty. And, and I think right now, the, all of the neighbors are very, we work together to make it a very lovely place to live, and there's not contention, but I can definitely see contention coming as you put more jet skis on, especially when they're upper-level homes. These people will be affording and will be desiring to use the lake more frequently. I would expect that. Styles will be built, and then simply the blight. I think, I think lots 1 through 13 are going to be very unsightly. I think there's going to be a blight issue there, the way how it's designed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me? Sherri Powell, 2124, West Silver Bell. My husband and I have lived there for 22 years, 35-year residence. It is like living up north when you go in our backyard and outlooking at our front wa- It is like living up north when you go in our backyard and out looking at our front window. It's just beautiful. It's not gonna impact us as much, 'cause it looks like they're only gonna put four homes on Silverbell. One of our concerns is, we already have a cut-through on Silverbell, which means people will continue to cut-through in the speed, and the roads, and the water. When you pull on Silverbell, there's always water on the road. It's just, our quality of life, living here has been great. We love our neighbors. And the water will affect our neighbor's property. It goes under Silverbell, and it actually floods out their second lot. There's a lot of concern. I don't agree with rezoning it to a pud at all. I don't know if we can get away with never having it developed, but we're totally against cramming a bunch of homes. And Jocelyn is backed up. And I was wondering, where is the entrance on Jocelyn? I couldn't tell on the maps that he showed.
Yeah, you can put it on there, that's fine.
Like, how close is it to?
And then we'll take the notes, too, and we'll, since we're not trying to get them back.
So I'm just curious, where?
Put up something on there.
How close it is to Silverbell as opposed to Kinmount? And, yeah, the natural beauty, the habitats, the wetlands. In twenty-two years, we've seen some of the habitat go away. We've got more snapping turtles. It's a great area, but it doesn't need to be a pud. It's just too much. So hopefully you'll do what's in the best entrance of the residence. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Butler. I live at forty-eighty Silver Valley Road. And I would just like to say that, I'd like to speak about what we have right now. And what that is, is a natural basin that holds water, slows it down. And, you know, obviously, there's tons of wildlife back there. I've actually canoed through this upland land. I've, all the way from Carpenter Lake, all the way to Jocelyn, walked out and went to the party store. I guess the fish back there don't know this is land. What I'm most concerned about is the land around it is already saturated. They may have retention ponds, detention ponds, whatever. That's for their building sites. But meanwhile, they're displacing fifty-four acres of water. And where will it go? And, you know, basically, you're getting a new revenue from new homes, and the residents that live here will eventually have to pay for, you know, ways of getting rid of this water, sewage updates, and, you know, various things like that. I think that when we look at the roads in this area, we're looking at roads that are constantly in disrepair. And that's because the road bases are saturated with water. And this will not help. You know, I'm the same as someone else mentioned. Last Thursday, my basement flooded. Not bad, but, you know, I've been living here twenty years, and I've been digging drains constantly. The house across the street was ill-advised to build a house there. I don't know why the township allowed them to do it. I think it's been for sale for three years. People look at it. I think as soon as they walk the land and their feet are soaked, they walk away. I don't know what'll eventually happen to that house. But I'm stuck across the street looking at it, and so are the rest of my neighbors. It's not a good thing. I hope this doesn't go through at all. I don't want one more unit back there at all. We have a very good thing, the way it is, and you don't appreciate the benefits of it until it's gone. So I hope you'll consider turning this down.
Good evening. My name's Ken Doe. I live at fifteen-fifty Nancy G. Been there close to forty years. And I'm just wondering if we left the zoning as-is. And you take the wetlands out of the consideration, how many viable spots is there really to build on? And my next question is also, I'm wondering what the DEQ thinks about all this. I'm sure they're gonna have to get involved. And they're pretty strict about, or used to at least be strict about the rules and regulations about all the water. And, yeah, this township, you know, I concur with most people who've been up here. It's been a great place to live. We moved up here to be out. I grew up in the city, and I loved to come up here and move out of the city. It was great. We still enjoy it. We'd love to see it stay the way it is. And I'm just, I'm concerned that there's gonna be a whole lot more problems with the additional houses coming in. And I don't think we need any more trouble. I don't think the township needs any more trouble dealing with all the water, and the flooding, and the roads, and all the issues. So I think there's a lot more going on here than people actually realize. I hope you guys consider all avenues, and really sit down and hash this thing through. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cliff Messing at sixteen-eighty Nancy Lane. We've lived there over twenty-five years. And I don't see how more traffic and more congestion will benefit Orion Township. And it's not really compatible with your slogan, "We're living is vacation." So we've been there twenty-five years, and I've never had a problem with any flooding or anything, and I hope it doesn't change with this development. Or you'll probably hear from me. And these are small lakes where jet skis and boats out there, you can hear it, you know, all through the neighborhood. So that would be adverse to the development. These builders, they'll come in and build the houses and leave, and then we will be stuck with all the problems they will leave behind. So, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dave Mills, two-oh-two-three, West Silverbell. And I have some questions regarding the recognizable benefit for a planned unit development. The first one is preservation of natural resources, but not limited, specifically but not limited to woodlands, specimen trees, open spaces, wetlands and hills. And when I see the proposal, it looks like there's gonna be some serious deforestation in order to put this many houses in that area. And also, we've already talked about the fact that the backs of the lots will be encroaching into the wetlands. If we don't rezone, those lands, those two issues wouldn't have to occur. We've talked a lot about the improvements in traffic patterns, and I don't see how rezoning to put this many units in over what it's currently zoned for can possibly improve that, but I'd be willing to hear. And then the last one, I've looked at the plans, and I've seen, and I haven't seen any indication of improvements in the aesthetic qualities of the development itself, such as unique design site features, extensive landscaping, or safety path, greenway connections. And I'd be interested in what the developers have planned to meet that rezoning criteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doug Alon. I live on Carpenter Lake, sixteen-thirty-nine Nancy G. Lane. I have one acre with a house, a hundred-and-fifty-foot lakefront edge. These are my neighbors right here. I'm opposed to this development a hundred percent. I submitted a letter to the township today, if you don't mind following along with me. It's dated March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. It's a three-page letter. I know I have less than three minutes now, so I just wanna point out a couple things. I do resonate with my fellow neighbors with respect to their objections. If you go to page one, subsection A of my letter of today, the heading is, "What impact will the proposal have on our ecosystem?" Now, I enjoy our ecosystem. My wife and I kayak, we paddleboard, we jet ski. We're some noisy people, I understand that. But we enjoy our paddleboarding at night. We go past Cliff's Place in the evening. We go clear to the north point of Mud Lake, and we watch the sunset. That's one of our favorite things to do, right out in front of George's house. We do share the lake with our other members. There are seven homes on Mud Lake now, twelve homes on my lake. Do the math. They now wanna add fifty-four homes. Can you imagine the traffic that that will create to our lake? One of the questions I have is, will the potential homeowners, if you unfortunately approve this rezoning, which I hope you do not, will the new homeowners have access to the lake? And if so, what will that do to the lake from the standpoint of quality of life of the people using the lake right now? Not just fishing, I'm a fisherman, I'm a fly fisherman. I like to fly fish on the lake. I also do sporting, other sporting activities. But what will this impact of fifty-four new homes, and potentially a hundred-and-eight new cars, and the runoff from all that, have on the quality of the fisheries? If you can go to page two, paragraph B, the heading is, "What is the advantage for the local citizens in approving a change in the zoning from the SE current status?" There've been a lot of people here talking tonight about the pros and cons and benefits. I'm not gonna get into that. But I just wanna point out to item number ten. If you, I noticed they didn't pull up the actual drawings that they submitted to the city. Please look at PUD eleven-one dot O. If you have it there, please pull it up. It calls for fifteen-hundred-and-fifty-seven trees, so one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven trees will be removed. And it calls for one thousand two hundred and forty-seven trees to be paid into a replacement fund. What the heck is a replacement fund? That's my question. And what's the impact to our ecosystem of replacing those trees, and removing those trees? Just one final thing, I would encourage the commission here to look at PUD number three. Specifically, there are lines drawn throughout, and it's not on the representation, it was up here. But if you look at the actual documents on file with the city, they show lines drawn where they're wanting to fill in the lake, the lake. And there are also lines drawn on the other side in the wetlands where they wanna fill in the wetlands. I'm not permitted to fill in the wetlands or lake at my property. Please don't let them do it.
Kristy Gearhart. I live at twenty-thirty-two Kinmount Drive, right at the end near Jocelyn. And it's, I take my grandson down to the bus stop as it is, and it's hard even for the bus drivers, plus it doesn't flare out like it's supposed to. And on top of that, you know, there's vultures that live back there, deer, all kinds of wildlife. And how are you gonna support, do about these wetlands? Make sure they're preserved? You can't, and you know it, 'cause they're not doing it down at the end of the street. They're at Hope Field and Kinmount. Somebody's trying to fill in and build a house. I don't know if it's legal, but the trains, the truck trains come through with dirt last spring like man, and they're trying to fill it in. That is not right. We can't even use part of our yard. We had to put another fence up so the dogs don't go in the water. So now, we're gonna look at a bunch of, you're gonna replace trees. Yeah, little trees, but what about these big gorgeous trees? And how are you gonna litigate the wetlands? Preserve them. They're gonna go on people's yards are in the wetlands. They're gonna do what the hell they want. And you know it, and I know it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jen Williams. I'm at four-three-six-zero Cornith Street. Carpenter Lake is across the street from my house. And I use the lake quite regularly to kayak. I also have a boat, a twenty-foot boat. And it's a, you know, even one boat on the lake, the wake on the lake is so big that it, okay? And I can't imagine if I had fifty-four new people coming on the lake with a big boat, or even jet skis, like, the water would be everywhere. So that's one concern. Another concern is, like, right by my house, there was a project where a bunch of trees were cut down, and I had a little bit of flooding on my property. And this project started three years ago, and they still have not completed this project over three years. So my concern is, if they start a project like this, it's gonna take how many years? Is it gonna be one year, is it gonna be five years? And in the meantime, while you're trying to fix these wetlands that are getting destroyed, you know, that time period in between them doing it and actually having it done, where's that water gonna go during that time period? Because the wet spot near my house doubled in size when these people that are trying to build started tearing down the trees. It just doubled in size. So that was a problem in my property. I enjoy the beautiful sunsets on the lake as well. And for a kayaker, you know, you don't wanna go over all these waves on your kayak, you know? So anyways, that's about it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Malka, four-three-one-six, Cornith. I've lived here twenty-five years. We moved here because the traffic was horrible on the east side. I've watched swans come have babies every year for twenty-five years. The ecosystem will be ruined. All these animals will lose their habitat. The swamps are our filter from the toxins, from Eagle Valley, from the dumps, from GM. They filter out the toxins for our water and our lakes. If our lakes get all these toxins, our lakes will die. The water is horrible. Last Thursday's storm, the sewers at the end of Jocelyn couldn't take it. And it flooded. And it took out our hill where, like, fourteen of our houses are at the bottom of the hill. We barely had one track. And that was the water coming all the way from Jocelyn down the street, trying to get to the lake. If we take all the wetlands away, there'll be nowhere else for this water to go. I was told years ago that Silverbell and Nancy G. got sewers and paving because their wells were contaminated from, okay? But we were told it was paid for by other because of the quality of their water and their wells. So if this proposed goes through and makes all of our wells up and down Kinmount, you know, who's gonna pay for us to have city water, or new wells, or sewers? Paved road, for that matter. Most of us can't afford it. I'm a single mom, I can't afford to. And I don't wanna lose the wildlife. That's why I moved here. So I'm greatly opposed to this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wendy Stiller. I live at thirteen-seventy West Silverbell Road. I agree with everything that everyone has said. I've looked at the wetlands map. And my big concern, and what I'm gonna touch on just briefly, is the homes, lots one through twenty-nine, and fifty-one through fifty-four on Silverbell, would be in the wetlands. That's insane. The wetlands are full. They're being used by the birds. I don't know how to control the fertilizer. I don't know how to control the fertilizer that will be used by these homes. So that's my biggest concern, as well as everything that everyone else has said, but I want to stress the concern I have with the wetlands and the homeowners.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just want to ask, I believe legally we have a right to the environmental site assessment report, so I think the neighbors would also be very interested in seeing that environmental site assessment report, so that would be, if that's already been done, made available as well. Just wanted to add.
Thank you. Any other members public which should make comment at this time?
Barb Tyson, 1655, Nancy G. Lane. I live on, I've lived on Carpenter Lake for over 47 years, so I can't even imagine that this would go through. I didn't take it seriously, but now I'm really unnerved about it. I remember when the GM plant went in and everyone said that would be no big deal, and our lake would flood. I would lose a third of my backyard, I lost all my shrubbery, and it was my job to call GM and to tell them to close the gates over there because too much water was coming through. So when I see that, you know, you have these detention ponds, that just scares me because I know that things can go wrong. So I'm just hoping, you guys are all nice-looking men. I just hope that you will think this through. I'm just trying to butter you up a little bit. But anyway, I hope you take this seriously, because it is a big deal to the ones of us that live out here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've lived around Carpenter Lake for 10 years now. I've watched a few things happen, and one of my biggest concerns is naturally like my neighbors with wetlands. I want to know what's going to happen to the water, I want to know what's going to happen to the drainage issues. We've got an area like this, the next closest similar thing we've had in the area was the Silverdome, okay? That hole needed to be filled. Where'd all that dirt and that fill dirt come from? Where's all the fill dirt going to come from to put all these houses in? Okay? I don't think the wetlands are going to be preserved, I really don't. But where's the dirt going to be shipped in from? What toxins are going to be in it? What's that going to throw into Mud Lake and Carpenter Lake? And what's that going to do to the environment around us? Big discussion was about all the garbage trucks and the weight of those that were affecting the roads and how they were breaking up in our area lately. What's going to happen with all these dump trucks? All the weight of the fill dirt coming in on these roads? How's that going to impact everything? Just one more question. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Any other member of the public which should make comment at this time? I'll turn it over to my secretary to go ahead and summarize. We also received a number of written communications, I'll go ahead and have him just tally those up if you want to give us a count on how many for and against what you have.
Sure. The township received 15 letters from community members, all of them opposed to the development. A number, most of the letters were, most of the folks submitted a form letter that addressed a number of issues, many of them discussed during the public comments section today. I will say, rather than reading the letter, I will say that the, in summary, the concerns brought up included the impact on the wetlands, on the forest areas, and impact on the natural features of the area and to animals. There were concerns outlined in the form letter as well as others about fertilizer runoff into the wetlands and into the lakes, and separately, concerns about the flooding in the area, as well as the impact of additional traffic on Jocelyn Road on Silver Bell Road. It was very consistent in all the, not just the one letter that was submitted that different folks signed, but also other letters that people submitted.
Thank you. And then, do you have a final tally, or we'll tally those up, how many, and we'll, there, I see on the public record, we'll also tally those for record here if you have them.
Show, it's 15 against, 04.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to the township board for their questions, comments. Yes, Ms. Clerk.
My name's Penny Schultz, I'm Kirk for Orion Township, but I'm also a resident on Mud Lake. My husband and I live at 1770 Kenmount Drive, and I'm not able to comment on this because it would be considered a conflict of interest. And I do want to thank everyone for being here tonight. And if we vote on this as a board tonight, I will have to recuse myself from voting because it would be considered a conflict of interest. And when the Township Board of Trustees also makes a decision on this after the Planning Commission has reviewed it, I will have to recuse myself for those same reasons. Thank you.
Thank you for that disclosure. Thank you, ma'am clerk.
Ms. Supervisor, is this thing working? Can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to recuse Clerk Schultz from discussion or voting on this as a clerk. She still has her constitutional First Amendment rights to address this as a resident, but as a township clerk, it would be a conflict of interest since your property is within the 300-foot radius and also possibly affects the development. And that's my motion.
Yeah, just comments from the board.
I recognize some of you out there, I'm a lifelong resident here, and I've seen some of you too. I think a couple of you might even answer the fire calls on, so. Being a lifelong resident here, I share your pain. I've seen every development in this community. I don't like change either, but it's inevitable. And this is why we have the process here of these planning commission and our township board, and we try to do what we think is the best for the whole community. First of all, I want to thank all the residents for showing up. Believe it or not, we do hear you. We also have to protect the private property rights of any individual that lives in this township. Like all of us, we own our own homes, our own property, and this parcel too is private property guaranteed by the Constitution. So whether or not you can stop the development, is this the right development? That's why we're going through this process. Currently, as zoned, someone could probably come in there and come to the planning commission without having to go through a public hearing like this, if they do the regular zoning as it is. But that's not the case here tonight, they're doing a PUD. This process will ultimately, the planning commission will make a recommendation to township board. Ultimately, the township board will have the final say on this. But we have faith and justice in our planning commissioners and our consultants on doing what's right and following the letter of the law and protecting everyone's rights. Number one on this property, like I said, I've got a lot to say here, so it's my turn now to have the floor. I don't have a time, thank you.
We're timing you.
My major concern, I share with you, is our ecosystem. We all know how that is in this community, especially in this one area, with Judah Lake, Carpenter Lake, Mud Lake, the Brown Drain, Clinton Watershed. I too want to preserve that. That's why the state law, there's state laws on this, we have township laws that regulate this, and it's up to these officials to make sure that everything is done right. Because as we know in the past, I heard some of you say that, some people have done things not right. I'm just going to go through a bucket list here real fast, and I'll share the microphone with the rest of my compadres up here. My one concern is a traffic study, the density setbacks, the wetland preservation, and if there's ever a reason why we enacted a fragmities ordinance in this township, this is a perfect case right here, why we do that. And I was over there looking at that, I see there's already fragmities in there. They will drastically affect your ecosystem, and that's why we've been proactive in developing that with all our properties in the township. I'm a proponent, when they do these PUDs, of doing the one trash hauler, so it saves 15 refuge trucks in out of your community five days a week. And number two is, I served on the fire department when they were talking about putting that excess road in there off of Jam Road. The current road's there, emergency road, so we can get into Hope Field and Kenmount. Now, I was back there here about a year ago on a ZBA case I had to do, where the road dead ends right back there. And I don't know whose responsibility it is to make sure that road is still drivable and cleared for the fire emergency trucks. Regardless if this goes through or not, that has to be maintained. Now, whose responsibility is it? I don't know, I think we can find out. But that's to protect you folks on Hope Field and Kenmount there if those railroad tracks ever get used again. Thankfully, General Morris is not using rail for coal, for car haulers, or for any of their parts, you know, frames and stuff like that. But that could change down the road, and that track could go back, you know, be used again. So I'm real concerned about the safety and making sure that excess road is maintained, no matter who does it. And then, lastly, I just want to remind you that when we close out this public hearing portion of it, this is not over. We will be leaving the room, and then the planning commission will take this up as their next thing on their agenda, so please stick around. That's all I got.
Hi, I'm Donnie Steele, and I had a couple of questions. Can you hear me? Is it, okay. I appreciate both parties coming out, the developers, I appreciate they're wanting to develop the land because I think, like was said earlier, they do have rights to the property. And I also appreciate the neighbors coming out because I think it's important to express your concerns of these developments as they come in. And I drove by it tonight in the rain, just to get a better feel for it, and it is, I have to say, it's a little muddy over there on Kenmount, so I know that the water is present. Just real quick, my concerns are on Silver Bell, having four more driveways on the corner. I think that that is kind of cumbersome, and the wetlands are really close to the road, so I'm curious on wetland delineation for building on those four lots on the corner. I'm sure there's a safety path in there somewhere, I just have not, I haven't been able to see it. That's very important, especially down Jocelyn, because there are no safety paths going to Brown Road, and I think it's really important to have that as a public benefit. I did not hear what the public benefit was, I don't know, or maybe it didn't stand out to me. But I would think improving the road would be a huge benefit. And I am concerned about the density and the wetlands, and I just think the DEQ will pay close attention, and I'm assuming that the planning commission will as well too. So I just defer to them for that. And I think, I think that's all I had.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out. I got involved, some of you have heard this before, but I got involved originally, I got volunteered to be my homeowners association vice president back in 2000, when I was fighting a development that was going to go in my backyard. And I showed up at HOA meeting and said, "We can't let this happen." And they said, "That's great, you're here and you have a pulse, now you're our vice president." And so, and then I got more involved as, obviously, and now I serve as your township supervisor, and I greatly appreciate that privilege. So I understand where you're at in the level of anticipation and frustration, and how in the world could this happen? I get all that. I want to kind of echo what Mike said a little bit and just say that this is a long process. The PUD process is not going to be determined tonight, I can guarantee you that. There are at least, there's a concept approval, and then there would be a final approval if the concept approval goes through, and in between there, generally, there's several months where a lot of these questions will be answered, and if they're not answered, and ultimately, we've seen it happen both ways, where projects get approved, projects get scaled back. I share the same concerns that have been mentioned by most of you, that will be, it'll be the onus on the developer to address those concerns with wetlands and things like, and traffic, and traffic studies, density setbacks, I agree with invasive species, fragmities, which probably will harm your ecosystem more than houses will, if you're not educated on that. That's something we've been taking a real aggressive approach to, because we do have 42 lakes in our 36 score miles. You know, all that said, the property is not park property. We have about 30% of our landmass is park property, that will be park property, this is not, this is private property. In the six and a half years I've been township supervisor, we have probably had, I don't want to exaggerate, and I kind of look at Tammy over there, but 10-ish meetings on this property with potential developers, people that have come through that have wanted to build everything from multifamily condos to single family. So generally, I like the trend that we're going less dense than more dense in the things that have been proposed to us, and everyone should be cognizant that it is private property. People have the right to develop their property, doesn't mean that we're approving this, but we are tasked, and the other thing I want to say is, everyone you're looking at are your neighbors, we all live in the community, and we're generally volunteers, everybody gets paid a little bit of money, Penny, Donnie, and now you're full-time elected, so we get paid a little bit more, and this is our full-time job. But I say all those things to say that we do care, we also understand that there are rights of the property owners, not just on this property, but any property, and so we have to weigh that. And that's why we do have the consultants that work for us, all the approvals that would be required if anybody were to build one house or 54 with the DEQ and DNR and the wetlands. And so, you know, we're here to learn tonight as well with you, you know, we're hearing this presentation together, and so we're gathering information, and I just kind of wanted to explain the process a little bit. And certainly, Tammy is a great resource, and many of you probably have already met her if you've been calling and asking about this. My office is also a resource for you, is this moves forward or doesn't move forward or on any issue, if we can help you. But we're here to learn tonight, and should it move forward, there would be a lot of hurdles and steps that would be required before a shovel would go on the ground. And I do want to say, kind of in closing, we have seen development in our community, but we still really value and cherish the natural resources that we have, all of us live here too. So we don't take this job lightly, and we're, I would just maybe speak for the board that we're eager to learn about the answers to a lot of your questions as well. And with that, I will turn it back to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And with that, we'll bring it up here, again, this body up here, commission will have a chance to have the way into it under a regular meeting, but any initial questions before we turn back over to the petitioner? We'll get there. All right. We'll go ahead and invite the petitioner back up to go ahead and, hopefully you're taking notes, if not, I was, and, you know, start going over some of the questions, the comments from the public and township board and us.
Thank you. As you indicated, we also appreciate all the comments from the public, we appreciate the comments from the trustees. I think Mr. Trustee Flood said at Bass is, "This is a process. We are here to work in a collaborative effort with the planning commission, with the board, and especially with all the residents." What I was encouraged on is, the biggest concern of the residents is also our largest concern, is the preservation of the wetlands. There are a lot of different themes that people addressed tonight. The prevailing one seemed to be the wetland preservation, flooding and stormwater. We can address- We can address traffic. We're happy to address all of your comments. I did take notes, but it may be best for you to ask questions. But we have the same goal in mind. It's to, how to be a proper steward of this property and to develop it in the most responsible way. This property will be developed, whether it's fifty-four houses, or fifty houses, or some other number. This property will be developed, and it will be developed in the upland area. And regardless of the number of houses, the preservation of the wetland is first and foremost. There's also a lot, as much as I appreciate all the comments tonight, there was also some misinformation or some misstatements. We're not destroying the wetlands. We are preserving and conserving the wetlands. There's less than one acre that would be filled in. The rest of it will be maintained in its natural state. There will be protections in form of conservation easements. There will be signage on it. It'll be developed and monitored by the DEQ, and there will be master deed and bylaws with enforcement by the homeowners association. So we share the same concerns that the township board shares, the planning commission, and all the residents. The other theme that I felt was important is that Orion Township is a unique place. It's a, it's a unique community within southeast Michigan. It does feel like up north in a more urban environment. And what attracts a lot of residents to this community and why they enjoy it is the same reason that we want to develop it in the same format or the same amenities that some of the existing residents enjoy. So this is a beautiful piece of property, that the wetlands will be preserved, that the homes that are built on it will get to enjoy the beauty and the feel of the wetlands, but won't be able to use them or develop them. Certain residents will get the benefit of the lake, just as other homeowners on the lake get the benefit of it. And we want to use this process in a collaborative basis. We don't expect it to be approved tonight. What we'd like to do is learn from you, some of more, your issues, more concern, but walk away here with certain guidelines that'll be helpful so that we can go back and do some additional research and then come back to you. But with that, I'm hence happy to answer any and all questions that you might have.
Okay. Thanks for giving that context for it. I'll just start going through some of them. Sewer for the lots on Silver Bell, maybe sanitary sewer overall, maybe you can comment on that. Was it going to be servicing it? There's a question on well, sanitary, and so forth, and in particular on Silver Bell. And then if sewer is going to be brought there, is there any consideration for the neighbors who may be forced to tap in?
Sure. I'm going to introduce John Thompson as our civil engineer with PEA. John does, John and his firm do a lot of work within the community, so I'm going to let him answer some of the technical aspects of that.
Good evening. Again, John Thompson with Professional Engineering Associates. With regards to basically all the public improvements, with regards to wetlands, to storm sewer, to sanitary sewer, stormwater management, we'll be working in concert with King McGregor and the rest of the team to meet the requirements of not only the township and DEQ as well. Specifically, with regards to sanitary sewer, water main, those will all be public services, extending the existing utilities to the township. The specific details are premature, you know. And again, we reiterate, this is the first step of multiple steps along the way. So finite details on exactly where that sewer will be extended, how it'll be extended, we don't know at this time. But we'll work with the township engineer to come up with the extensions, but they will be all public sewers.
Just clarify that there's no, there won't be any wells on the property, so anybody that has existing well won't be depleted. And talk a little bit more about the stormwater, if you would.
There'll be no wells on the site.
And there was my next question, stormwater and the flooding of both lakes. You know, you've heard the concerns of the residents with regards to the soil, and maybe, I know it's initial, but any initial calculations looking at stormwater, the flooding issue, and/or soil sampling, or those effects?
We've conducted test pits on the property, looked at the soil types. If you look at the topography on the site, there's significant change, over twenty feet of topography change from the lake to the highest points on the property. So we have, again, we will reiterate, we are working within the upland areas of the property. So these will be graded such that, the houses will be installed such that they're all above the water elevation, water table. So there shouldn't be any issue whatsoever with our new lots with respect to direct flooding. With regards to the watershed itself, I, you know, I can't fix it. It's a situation that, that every resident has purchased their homes, understanding that the Clinton River watershed has fluctuations in flash flooding, and, and yes, you're going to see fifteen feet of your property disappear. That's actually the way the system's supposed to function. So that's part of keeping your ecology. So directly with regards to the improvements of this site, we will meet all the requirements of both, again, the township and the DEQ, such that the pre-development runoff from the storm sewer is equal to the post-development runoff from the storm sewer, and specifically restricted, overly restricted because this is the Brown Road drainage district. So we actually have greater, more strict requirements for discharge than in other areas of the township.
Continuing, just looking at the notes here, any road improvements on the public roads, be it Silver Bell or Jocelyn, any calling for that with perhaps home sites on Silver Bell overall? Is there any thoughts on those improvements along?
Keep going. As you know, the township doesn't own roads. The, I think I've heard that from Mr. Varnak quite a few times. If you have any concerns about the roads, call the road commission. So we will be working with the road commission. We've already reached out and had preliminary conversations with respect to that. So again, it's premature to be having anything specific with regards to the requirements of the road improvements, but we'll certainly be meeting all the requirements of the road commission.
Lot size, and then specifically, I guess, the lots and the concern of where the lot lines are and their preservation area start there, I guess. So kind of some of the building envelopes and lot size again, if you would.
The lot sizes are eighty feet in width. The interior lots on the interior of the road are generally eighty by one thirty-five, one forty. The lots kind of on the perimeter are eighty by several hundred feet. Those lots, the perimeter lots do contain wetlands on there, which will be preserved and protected by rights in the master deed and bylaws. And then there'll be signage posted, so a resident will not be able to develop or touch the wetland areas within the lots. Some of the things that we heard tonight, and I think Mr. Luan in his review letter suggested potentially shrinking some of the rear yards of the perimeter lots and creating a greater portion of the wetland area, and actually put that into a common area and take that away from the homeowners. That's one of the things that we can look at. And one of the things that we want to use this as a collaborative basis is determine what elements of the plan are sustainable and what elements need improvement, and work with you on those kind of issues. But all the wetlands are protected. Those won't be built upon, with the exception of one acre on a couple of lots. There's some misinformation that, you know, lots one through thirteen are going to be built in the wetlands. They're not. The homes will be built on the upland areas, and the wetlands will be all protected.
How many homes? Would they have lake access, docks? Any discussion as to that?
Again, we want to use this as a forum to get an understanding of what's important to the community, and in subsequent meetings have further discussion. You know, right now, we're kind of looking at, you know, approval of a concept and a number of units, and the details that you're suggesting are very important, and we'd like to work that out with further input from you.
There's a question about the number of trees that were being removed from the site, and then also how much would be placed into the replacement fund.
Do we, John, do we know the exact number of the trees that? No, we have a tree survey which, which identifies all the trees in the upland area. It doesn't mean that every single tree is going to be removed. That's an exercise that we'll have to go through with your planning consultant and your environmental consultant to determine that. But we will meet the township ordinance for replacement trees. We generally like to replace trees that are removed with trees on site, to the extent that that doesn't work. You know, we would contribute to a replacement fund that the township can use at their discretion to place trees elsewhere in the township. But we will meet whatever is required under the ordinance.
A question on the public benefits is required by the planned unit development, the public benefits as part of the development that were highlighted.
Public benefits are several, be it preservation of woodlands, wetlands, and other natural features on the property. We're developing less units than we think would otherwise be approved under your current master plan. There'd be less, that would count for a further reduction on township infrastructure. There will be undoubtedly road improvements required by the road commission for Jocelyn Road, which will be a benefit to all of the community. There's area up on Silver Bell that could potentially be used for parking if the township is ever successful, and creating a rails-to-trails program on the railroad. So part of the property on Silver Bell could potentially be used for that. And we would also look if there's other public benefits that the township at large would want to see. We're certainly willing to discuss and incorporate those.
Is the conceptual plan, there's a question on setbacks and the proximity of the building envelope and so forth. It looks like it varies a little bit. Is there any tentative on the setbacks between the different units?
We're proposing a setback that would, I think we're five feet less. One of the mechanisms of PUD allows you to discuss and negotiate the setbacks from the pure ordinance. And what this, what we're proposing is actually some greater side yard setbacks, so that we can have some flexibility to do side entry garages and some front entry garages. I think we're proposing, John, correct me if I'm wrong, five feet less on the front yard setback and then the rear yard setback on the building envelope?
Before I mention, maybe Doug, Doug can you help? Yeah, sorry. I've got, I've got the table here. The applicant is proposing a five-foot minimum setback, side yard setback, and thirty-foot total for both sides. So a little closer on one, a little bigger on the other, and that would be for a side load garage. Ten-foot minimums and twenty-foot total, so basically ten on both sides for a front load garage. So for a side load garage, they're proposing a little less on one side, a little more on the other, and then for a front load garage is a ten-foot side yard setback.
As you'll note, because the lots are so large on the perimeter, the setbacks, you know, we will be setback from the wetland in the building envelope, but setbacks really won't come into play in terms of encroaching on neighbors, on the majority of the lots on the perimeter.
Question, was there any discussion with DEQ at this point on the site, or with the wetlands existing, or any further due diligence on, other than delineation maps? There's questions.
We've done a delineation map with King McGregor, who's one of the foremost wetland consultants. They have done preliminary discussion with DEQ. There hasn't been an official walkthrough or sign-off from the DEQ. That would be part of the process once we get further along here. But they're aware of the site. It was a very conservative wetland assessment, and really just maintaining in the upland areas, and you can see the preservation of the majority of the site.
There's a question on the calculations under the underlying current zoning. Did you, was there a comparison versus your calculation on the upland hills during your PUD? Was there any other of those calculations? That was one of the questions raised.
We did do a calculation. Your master plan seems to be a little contradictory to itself. On one hand, it talks about three units per acre are permitted under the master plan. On another version, it talks about doing a parallel plan on the upland. We did do a parallel plan. I think it achieved thirty-two lots, John? Thirty-two lots that could be developed by right, by master plan. We don't think that that's a good development because it would account for the removal of more trees. It gives more, I guess, freedom to the homeowner or the builder to, to build more on the property. By doing a PUD, we can do it under a more controlled environment, have master deed and bylaws that protect a lot of the natural features. So that's why we're proposing it as a PUD, up to three units per acre.
Okay. Safety path, is there any internal pass called for and along Jocelyn or Silver Bell?
We didn't show them on here. It was noted, and, you know, we will work to meet the ordinance required by your planner and your engineer. One of the things that we'd like to talk about in discussion is the creation of the safety path would destroy a lot, potentially would destroy a lot of the wetlands. So it's kind of a catch-22. Do you want a safety path, or do you want to protect the wetlands? But that's one of the issues that we'd like to talk to you about, about potentially putting some of that money into a safety path fund, or putting into a general fund for the township for other uses. That discussion would come down the road on whether a safety path is really necessary here. One of the things that might potentially open up is if we did a rails-to-trails along the railroad, that might be a better alternative, using the existing easement, either the ITC easement, and not have to destroy additional wetlands to put in a safety path.
Okay, that's kind of a summary of the majority of the questions based on where you're at with the project. A lot of folks had a lot of specific questions that you noted, I noted, that you talked about initially. So I guess we'll take those comments for where it's at with this side of the project. With that, I'll go ahead and invite up any members of the public for any additional questions, new questions that you have. Be limited to two minutes. And again, new questions with regards to what's been presented and where we're at so far. Any member of the public have any new questions or things, new questions basically to add?
Sandy Dell, 1558, Nancy G. I'm glad I asked the question about the sewers because I know what it took to get them into the subdivision. They had to come in on the uplands because the wetland soils are too weak. They wouldn't take the weight. So whether that's going to be true between where they are now and where the developers want to put in their subdivision or not, I don't know. The alternative is connect them to the sewers that run right down the middle of Silver Bell, so have fun with that one. It was torn up for a couple of years. Some of you will remember that. Safety path, absolutely, we need that safety path. They can do it the same way it was done on Clarkston and the same way it was done on Silver Bell. Thank you.
Thank you.
So apparently I was the one who provided the misinformation on the lots one through thirteen. Actually, I'd like to restate that. I think that the blight between lots four and about seventeen, I think all of them will be blight. They're on the top of the hill, and I can't imagine not being able to see the homes from the water. I think that's, that's a fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug alone again, from sixteen thirty-nine, Nancy G. Lane. Just referencing back to my letter, March 21st, specifically paragraph number five says the PUD number two proposes thirty-one homes at 1.1 units per acre. PUD number, drawing PUD number three proposes fifty-four homes at 1.9 units per acre. So my question is, which is it? Is this, this commission entertaining both proposals or just one? And will we, when will we know which one we're actually discussing here with the board? So can we, can the commission give us some feedback on that?
Yes, which was from brought forth, the fifty-four units. The plan you see kind of appear on the, this evening was brought forth in our package is what we're considering.
Right, but my point is, and that through the FOIA requests, the actual documents show, PUD two shows a proposal thirty-one homes, so which is it?
That's the parallel plan. In other words, what could you put in here as zones? Straight zone. That gets you, you know, some assignment. We use that as a base, say that's how many you could put in here.
Okay.
As a zone. We use- We use that as a basis for then, okay, now you're, in this case, you're proposing 54 units, you know, we're, that's what we use it for.
Okay, good. So if I, just to clarify this, so 31 homes is what's permitted under current zoning SE, is that correct?
Yes.
Theoretically.
Is that, okay. And the proposal is to change it from 31 to 54?
Yes, I'll defer to my...
Yeah, this is a big part of my analysis. So if you stick around a few minutes, I'll, I'm going to hit on these in detail.
Thank you.
Michelle Tenalia, 2070 West Silver Bell. Directing the engineer talked about how the, what kind of water they would see on the proposed sites. He really didn't say anything about what the push would mean to the homeowners that are there now. So that was what my question was.
Any other additional questions?
Sherry Powell, 2124 West Silver Bell. I would be right across the street from the four units on Silver Bell. And we all have nice, beautiful properties and to have site homes side by side in front of my home will ruin my quality of life.
Dave Mills, 2023 West Silver Bell. So I'm confused, the way it's zoned now, they can put 31 buildings on that?
No.
What can they do right now with the way it's zoned?
We'll go over that in great detail. And when you take the item up shortly, I don't know if you have a cursory number or we can ask the petitioner rather, it's his time to interact to give a response as well.
Okay. My back question is, part of the benefits they said to the, to this PUD to meet the PUD requirements was that they were going to build 13 less than what they, than what they could if they get the rezoning. So I'm trying to see what the baseline is.
Yeah, that's based on they're considering as what the master plan calls for. They're saying on that calculation, we're 13 less than what the master plan would, you know, theoretically, you know, says you should build 13.
Okay.
That's kind of where that number's saying 13 less than that equivalent. Now, as we look at the other ones, you'll see the math and the parallel plan there's and so forth. Just timeout myself.
I'll, I'll wait for this. I still don't completely understand what's going on, but I'll wait for your definition.
Um, I don't have a number in front of me. Do we have a number on that by chance?
I think the plan reviewer is going to get into it in our site plan review.
Give them a couple of minutes and Doug will go on all that.
But do you have the hard number just for inquiring minds?
It's not in my report, but I kind of, I kind of calculated it out as we were sitting here. The as-zoned, my rough, rough calculation would be somewhere between 15 and 20 lots.
Okay. And watch more detail on that to come.
I don't know if anybody has driven by lately and seen right at the bottom of Hope Field and Jocelyn, you know how thick that gravel is from all the water that runs down the street? I've been out there trying to shovel it up, but it's hard to keep up with. But this, when you put in that many homes, there is definitely going to be a lot of runoff. And I don't understand how anybody could say that won't affect it. And with the, again, the fertilizers and, you know, this is, this is not going to be a, I mow my own lawn neighborhood, you know? This is going to be a little upper class. So, you know, we're going to have all the lawn companies coming in there to mow everybody's precious lot. But, you know, this is a sensitive area and there are a lot of birds, egrets, swans, hawks, there's turkeys in there, deer in there. So, yeah, I really hope you would seriously consider this area. And there's also 55 acres for sale on the north side of Silver Bell now. So, you know, how many more homes are going to go in over there? And what about on, it'd be the west side of Giddings across from the Orion plant when, where they put in all the roads for the industrial? You know, what's all going to go in there? So, you know, take, take serious thought of how all this is going to impact this area. And that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, Rosalyn Bussing, 1680 Nancy Lane. I'd like a clarification from the gentleman. He said that there would be no flooding on the new homes, but basically said that we would get flooding on our homes and that was our problem. I live directly across from where the development is going to be on Mud Lake. We own 12 acres there. We're not allowed to develop any of our property because of the wetlands. I don't understand why he's allowed to develop those wetlands. But I would like a clarification on what he said because I'm pretty sure that's what he said. We were out of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm for you, my petitioner.
I live on Kenmount and what she said is right. He did say the clear, basically the rest of us are on our own. What's going to happen to the river right directly behind my house? It does flood up in. There's no way you guys, and that lake cannot take any more boats. I don't care if you put one more, it's too much. Those are not big lakes. Mud Lake isn't even much of a lake. It's more of a wet swamp or whatever. I mean, yeah, you can get in there with a boat and everything, but not a very big boat, you're not gonna. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a little more, too. Questions, new questions?
Again, on the, on the access, you know, you see all that outer loop and, you know, we're supposedly going to maintain the wetlands. But what, what means maintain? I mean, can, can you walk, put a footpath to the water's edge? Can you put a dock? I mean, what, how much, how many of these houses will have access? I mean, do we, do we know? Do you have a number?
We'll take the no and then when he comes back, I, you know, address all of them so it's not a back and forth.
But the preservation, I mean, basically the whole, the whole outside of that loop is all wetland, so that's what I'd like to know because these lakes are small and it would, it would be devastating.
I've got a couple of simple questions for my own clarification. You're talking a PUD, it's registered, what is a PUD? I'm illiterate, I guess.
Planned unit development.
Okay. Now, also, I know enough to get myself in trouble, but you're talking about the land on either side of the house, I'm assuming, when you're talking about how much room between the houses? And that was like, what, would somebody, what was the footage that I heard?
Five foot?
Between this house, five foot on that, so there's 10 foot, correct, between the two houses?
Not quite because he's got, adds a little more on the other side.
So is that not a fire hazard? You know, like in a mobile home park, when this one catches fire, that 10-foot pretty much melts and burns the next one down, which creates a bigger fire issue? I'm just, just asking. That's awful close. That's really close. That's too many homes. One more thing, and I would love everybody to take a look. A lot of this has been logged in a lot of areas. And all we have growing now is popple and box elder. There is oak trees out there. And I'm, I look out and they're this big and they're tall and they're beautiful. A thousand trees that are this big that have been there, what, 100 years, maybe more? It's not been logged out there. This has been private property. Everywhere else, you've got garbage trees, the ones that grow fast, fall down, garbage. These are stately trees that they're just going to, indiscriminate.
Thank you.
So I guess I do have one more question I'd like to address. It seems that the, the access point, the drive, is, is very close to the creek, which is also, I don't know, maybe 50 yards from the other entrance point. Is it Kenmount Drive, I think it is?
Yes.
Were you folks pulling? Geez, seems how it's so both, it didn't work out very well for Kenmount. I'm curious just how well it's going to work out for, for the other access point, it being so wet right there, just road degradation. I think that's something that really needs very close consideration because the whole, the whole area right there is really wet. And we, and we see the same thing on Silver Bell Road where the, where the swamp comes across, where the road is always washing out. It's just somehow it just crumbles because the, the sub-ground can't, just can't handle the weight of the traffic. So I think if you're going to put in an access point there, I think, I think that's, that's definitely something that's going to be problematic. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but I'm just saying that doesn't look great to me after having driven down for the last four years.
Thank you. Then I'll turn it back over to the township board for any additional comments, questions, concerns? All set? Thank you. One more time up here, obviously we'll have a chance here further. With that, before we close the public hearing, obviously we'll invite the petitioner back up to answer those additional questions. Any closing remarks before we close the, the public hearing portion?
Thank you. A lot of the issues that were raised, I think were raised the first time, so I want to use this opportunity to maybe clarify a couple of things. Some of them, I think, are misconceptions. Reference keeps making that we're developing the wetlands. We're not developing the wetlands, we're developing the upland portion. I think that's an important distinction. The wetlands are going to be preserved, they're not going to be destroyed. The tree survey was a thousand trees. Majority of the trees are scrub trees. They're not a thousand oak trees. So I think some of these distinctions are very important. I think one of the, the major distinction or one of the important clarifications, and to clarify Mr. Thompson's point, is this development is not going to flood other areas. I think what he was contending is that areas that have problems right now will likely continue to have problems regardless of this development. This development, and new developments in general, improve stormwater conditions. The retention ponds will, will retain and restrict all the water that has developed on this site and restrict the flow at a rate that is current or less than the current rate. So homeowners that are experiencing flooding will not experience additional problems because of this. I think that's very important. As it relates to some of the other issues about where the drives are located or some of those other issues, those are very technical details that our engineers, our traffic consultants, and our wetland consultants will work out. Those are not resolved at this, this point. We have to get further into the process and get an understanding on the other issues. And then those issues will be resolved, you'll have further input on it, further studies will be done. But at this point, those issues are not settled. Again, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that I might have missed.
I think you heard the, the final question. So I mean, I think your comments summarize the, you know, I guess more, it was stated before with the boats and access. You don't have an answer for that as your?
No, again, we want specific input from you on that if we, if we need to, you know, we'll listen if there's some limitations. I think, you know, something that's, that's very important and key is if you look at the property lines, this property owner owns the majority of the lake. Some of the residents have said that they're using the lake and they're not even residents on the lake, but they don't want residents here to use the lake. So I, I think it's important to have a restriction on it, to come up with an agreement that works, to document it in the bylaws, but to restrict this property owner from using a lake that it owns is onerous. The other issue I want to make is a lot of discussion was, was raised regarding what's a master plan, what's a PUD. I think the PUD is, is an important tool. When this property owner bought the property, it relied on a master plan that this property could be developed to a certain portion. We want to honor that, but at the same time, work with you on a collaborative basis on how the PUD could be developed with a master plan. It's easy to say, turn it all into parkland, turn it into, you know, don't use it, but that's not a practical solution. We're looking for a practical solution to work with you on it.
All right. With that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion for PC 2019-06. We're going to get right back on it.
Back corner down there, when that is Howard's property and right there next to that is Perry's property. I would be at that line all the way to Corbin. Saying you want that wood from the inside and then you own her property.
Sir.
Have to show in the stream that's next to it. So that yellow line is in everyone's backyard at that.
Okay. So, okay, so, and again, okay, and again, that was an area. We're going to get into more specifics in just a moment, but I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion for PC 2019-06. That's Silver Bell Point PUD concept or public hearing, joint public hearing with the Township Board of Trustees. I'm going to close that public hearing at 9:03. And I'll turn over to the Township Board of Trustees if they want to go ahead and close their meeting.
During our special meeting, all right, show support. Blood and steel, all favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned at 9:05.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and reconvene the regular meeting of the Orion Township Planning Commission after a brief five-minute recess. Again, you know, just so everyone knows, we're going to come right back and go right into this matter as the Planning Commission Board in five minutes, give the Township Board a chance to leave and stretch the legs, and we'll come back, you know, promptly in four minutes now, 9:08. So 9:08, four minutes from now, we'll go ahead and come back.
...that benefit, it's up to the applicant to bring that to us and tell us that this project is better or above and beyond anything we would get under the current zoning. And so that's the basic overview. It's a rezoning process. There will be at a minimum four meetings, two at the Planning Commission, two at the Township Board. And if the project gets tabled or postponed somewhere along the way, there would be more meetings. But required by ordinance, a minimum of four meetings before this project, if anything close to this, would be approved. So that's kind of the basic overview of PUD. It's a rezoning to a plan, basically. And as I mentioned, it's a flexible process. It allows the Township and Planning Commission and Township Board to look at a plan and maybe do some things that couldn't be done under conventional zoning. The applicant indicates throughout their documentation and throughout their presentations tonight that they, you know, part of their main benefit is preservation of natural features. And I'll talk about that in a little bit, a little bit later. The first thing, though, and this is one of the main duties of the Planning Commission, is to talk about the density of the project and what, how you feel about the density and how, if this is acceptable or not acceptable, kind of moving forward. And how we determine density is, there are a lot of, there's a number of questions from the public, very good comments, and I tried to copy pretty much all of your questions down. And in my ensuing reviews, I'll certainly try to incorporate some of your comments into my, into my review comments. But density is determined through what's called a density plan. And according to the PUD section of the zoning ordinance, there is a full section in the zoning ordinance that's dedicated to planned unit developments. It indicates that residential density shall be determined by the use of a density plan using the underlying zoning and/or the township master plan. So it gives, it's an either/or. So you've got, you've got a piece of property and to determine how many lots they could build on the property to start with, the applicant can go one of two directions. They can say, okay, the property currently is zoned SE, which I think it is zoned SE, and if we were to build lots that are over an acre on that property, yeah, it's zoned SE, 65,340 square foot lot, we could get X amount of homes. You could also look at the underlying master plan. Remember, this is a rezoning process, so if a developer was coming in to rezone the property, what would be, what would we be rezoning it to? We'd be rezoning it to what it's, what is proposed as under the master plan. Well, under the master plan, this property is planned, the corresponding zoning district is SR Suburban Ranch, which allows for 30,000 square foot homes, so under an acre each. So what the applicant did, one of the plans you saw tonight was a density plan based on the SR Suburban Ranch master plan. So that was the number of homes applicant has elected in their, providing us with a density plan. They've elected to use the master plan designation, which correlates to the SR zoning district. So that zoning district demonstrated 31 parcels. So they are proposing 31 parcels, or, you know, as their density plan. So to get up to the number of units they are requesting, the township would have to grant a density bonus. And there's, there are provisions to allow a density bonus. Now, before we get into that, and this is a little, sorry, I'm talking a lot, but I think this is, I think this is helpful. Before we really get into the density bonus, the density plan is supposed to be a plan that could be built if the PUD plan wasn't proposed. And so there's some criteria for the Planning Commission to use and the Township Board to use to help determine if the project, if the density plan they provided, that is, the 31-unit plan, would be reasonable on this property. There's a number of criteria, and applicants met most of that, things like minimum lot width, you know, lot area, things like that. They've provided all those, the 31 lots meet the lot area, they meet the lot width, all of that sort of thing. There's a few things, though, that they, they don't, the density plan does not meet. Those are, a number of the homes are located within, I've got parcels 18 and 20 that, excuse me, there's a 25, back up. All structures, streets, roads, and driveways shall be set back 25 feet from any wetland or boundary. The cul-de-sac on the density plan accesses parcels 18 to 20, and they're found within a wetland. So that, that doesn't exactly meet the density plan requirements. Lots in the density plan shall provide sufficient building envelope size without impacting wetlands. We note on the density plan, there's areas marked wetland fill areas on parcels three through 10, 16, 17, and 21. And the wetland fill areas appear to be being provided to show sufficient building envelope size. To address this, an adequate building envelope should be demonstrated in each of those density plan parcels. And you'll hear me say this throughout, throughout my review, submerged lands are supposed to be shown on the density plan, and the high watermark or the edge of Mud Lake is not shown on the density plan. So Mud Lake should not only just be shown in the density plan, but it should be shown in all the plans. There's, there's not a good indication of where the edge of the lake is, it's just simply not shown on the plans, and I think that's an important element moving forward. And then least of, least of the issues is a schedule of lot areas. So there are some elements that the applicant will have to address to make the density plan a valid density plan. There's, there's things right now that I think could be corrected, but as, as drawn, raise question whether this density plan is a valid density plan getting up to, getting up to 31 lots. Now, there is a, another part of the master plan. So the first part of the master plan says density plan should be based on the master plan, and the master plan designation, as I mentioned, is suburban ranch. Basically, in that same sentence, or a little bit later in the master, in that part of the document, it indicates a master plan density range of between 1 and 3 units per acre. So while we reference a specific zoning designation, which is a little under an acre per unit, if you go a little further in the master plan, it allows the Planning Commission to consider a range of densities. In my review on page three, I indicate I think it's reasonable to assume that the range of densities from 1 to 3 units per acre, as described in the single-family medium density master plan designation, is to provide the township some discretion in these kinds of decisions. So if the Planning Commission were to take into consideration surrounding land uses, surrounding zoning, existing land use, natural features, wetlands, woodlands, things like that, I think the, I think there is enough latitude within the way the current master plan is written that the Planning Commission can consider this range of 1 to 3 units, particularly in the sense we're looking at a planned unit development, and planned unit developments allow a lot more flexibility. So I think we have, we have two parts of this density question, and these two parts are something that the Planning Commission has to come to terms with, is, one, are we, are we going to be looking at the density plan strictly as the master plan corresponding zoning district of SR Suburban Ranch? Or are we going to be looking at the density as the range of density with a 1 to 3-unit range in density? And if we are going to look at that 1 to 3-unit range, I think the Planning Commission has a discretion to look at where, where we want to be in that range. The applicant is proposing the upper end of that range. They indicate that they believe they meet the master plan designation because they're looking at the upper end of the range in their calculations at the 3 units per acre. I think the Planning Commission has some discretion to determine what, what that range would be. So that's something that I think the Planning Commission should discuss in a few moments when, when we're done, the consultant part is done with our, done with our review part of this process. So that, that's, again, something that we, we have to come to terms with. On page three, I go over the summary of the things I've just gone over. So if the Planning Commission determines that this project should correspond to the SR zoning district, to get up to the, that doesn't, the applicant can still go forward with the number of homes that they want. However, it would require a density bonus of 23 lots. So if the Planning Commission makes a determination that the suburban ranch is the district we should use, the applicant is then looking at a 23 parcel density bonus. The PUD section of the zoning ordinance has a, has a whole section on density bonuses. Under the density credit section of the ordinance, a variable density credit may be allowed at the discretion of the Planning Commission and Township Board upon the demonstration by the applicant of design excellence in the PUD. The applicant has to, to prove that design excellence, to get a density bonus, the applicant has to do several, two of the items in a list. And I'll read these items for the benefit of the Planning Commission and those in the public. The first is a high level of cluster development, where at least 20% of the PUD is common usable space. Our note here is that the applicant provides for 15% open space at the edges of the development. The rest of the project is either wetland or water, and it's not usable. So this, this criteria cannot be met. B, providing perimeter transition areas of green belts around all sides of the development of at least 100 feet. We note lots 1 through 10, 29, 30 through 34, lots 51 and lots 54 are all within the 100-foot transition area. We also note that a portion of the roadway that providing access to parcels 25 through 29 is planned to be within the 100-foot transition area, so this criteria cannot be met. C, the proposed plan is designed to enhance surface water quality and groundwater quality. Our Township Engineer will talk about those things in a moment, and that will really be more of a final PUD issue, but that's something that if the applicant wants to use that as a criteria to get a density bonus, they'll have to provide us with more information of how they plan to enhance surface water quality or groundwater quality. Letter D, provisions of the design, and design that preserve natural features. This is one of the main elements that the plant, that the applicant, I should say, is stating, that they are trying to preserve natural features. We indicate that extensive areas of each lot extend into wetlands and possibly water, Mud Lake. To ensure that this criteria is met, has been met, the applicant should explain how the natural features on site will be protected from the encroachment of lots and possible residential use into wetland areas. And the applicant should clarify how natural features will be preserved. So, again, if we're looking at a PUD, we're supposed to be looking at something that might be above and beyond what we would normally get. So how is this project going to preserve natural features better than a standard development that we might get? Again, the proof is on the applicant to provide that to us, it's not on us to make that determination. So that's something I think going forward, the applicant should probably provide to us to verify that. The fifth item is donation or contribution of land or amenities that represent significant community benefit. The applicant hasn't addressed that, so I don't think they're pursuing that criteria. And letter F, other similar elements as determined by the Planning Commission and Township Board. There are no other elements that have been determined at this point. So there are criteria for a density bonus to be granted. If the Planning Commission considers SR is the base density, two of those elements must be addressed, so the applicant, at this point, I don't see where those two elements have been addressed to get the density bonus. And if the project is to go forward, the applicant's going to have to come forward and show how those criteria can be met. Moving on, and I'll summarize at this point, I thought it was important to talk about the density in detail. I'll try to summarize as much of the rest as possible. The next part of our review goes into the criteria and information required for PUD. There is a section of zoning ordinance that outlines six criteria for PUD approval. Those are, and these are a summary of those, the six criteria for a PUD to be approved are, one, recognizable benefit to the community, two, that the density impact will not be a negative impact to the township, three, conformance of the township master plan, four, that the project will not cause economic, will not have economic harm or cause impacts to the township, five, that there's guaranteed open space, and six, unified control. Over the next several pages, I go through the applicant's, their statements of how they believe they're meeting all of these criterias, or these criteria, and how, you know, my thoughts and comments as the Township Planner, and how they, how they can meet these. And in essence, a lot of our comments come back to that first, the same thoughts I had with the density bonus, is the applicant, in my opinion, has to do a better job of showing how the things they say are the benefits to this project are above and beyond those things that we are, would normally get in a normal development. So how, and maybe those things can be done. I did suggest, you'll see, and the applicant picked up on that, and some of the residents mentioned this as well, and I mentioned it earlier, is that if you have lots that extend into wetlands, what happens over time is people just, it's their lot, and they just start throwing grass clippings, or start moving back, moving back, play structure, and some, you know, sometimes the wetlands get used. This is a PUD, and a PUD is a very flexible process. So why are lots extending into the wetland at all? You know, there's, there's no, not necessarily a minimum-sized lot for a PUD, and if this is going to be on sewer, we don't need a septic system. So maybe to address some of the concerns the residents brought, some of the concerns I have, is pull these lots, to the greatest extent possible, out of the wetlands, and to leave those wetlands preserved. That would be something pretty unique for this PUD that we would not get under a standard development. But those, those are the kind of things that have to be brought up by the applicant. I provide some, some general discussion on, when we get beyond the required information about residential layout and analysis on page eight of our review. We mentioned the deviations that the applicant is proposing. They are, they are proposing deviations in required side yard setback, as I had mentioned during the public comment part of this review, as well as rear yard setback deviation and a front yard setback deviation. So that all the setbacks are somewhat less than would be required under the underlying SE zoning district. In our report, we talk a lot about natural resources, so I won't get into this any further. Again, I think it's critical that Mud Lake, the high watermark of Mud Lake show up on this plan. It's not on any of the plan sheets, and that's a critical natural feature on the site. And I think some of the concerns raised by the residents might be addressed if the lake is shown more clearly on the site plan, as, i.e., how many lots will have access to the, to the, to the lake and that sort of thing. With regard to site access and circulation, I did see there's a road commission review. In the packet, I think they're requiring a center turn lane, perhaps Township Engineer can give that in more detail. There are some sidewalk requirements. There's a safety path, and the safety path plan for the Township showed along Jocelyn Road. That will simply have to be shown in private, in plans moving forward. Central facilities and services are only issue here. Mr. Landis will get into a lot more detail with that, but our only, our only issue here, concern, is, is the single-point access for this whole property. Fire Chief has, does have some comments on that, but that's the obvious concern with access on the project. Landscaping, lighting, PUD agreement, phasing of the PUD, those are all final PUD issues. And really, to summarize again, there's really two parts to this PUD. This is a concept PUD, so we're not looking at necessarily the nitty-gritty of every, everything we do for a typical site plan, but we are, I think the Planning Commission should look at, to concentrate some of your discussions on two big topics. One of those is, is this piece of property, as presented by the applicant, does it, is it eligible? Does it qualify to be looked at as a PUD based on the criteria, section 30.03B of the zoning ordinance? And two, consideration of the density as proposed, as it relates to the underlying zoning and the master plan. And that, again, was the underlying zoning and/or that range of density, 1 to 3 units per acre. And then we provide a number of other concerns that we talked about in our review. So I apologize for long-windedness, but I think this project probably deserves a little extra explanation.
That was wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate the overview and context for the project as well. Thank you. With that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Landis on our engineering review for the conceptual, anything to add, and a whole lot of detail for you to work with yet, but
Sure.
Thoughts, comments, and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our letter of March 7, 2019, again, like you said, is a review of the concept plan. From an engineering standpoint, you know, we don't, really don't get down into the weeds of the plan until the final PUD, but I will kind of go over some of our initial concerns and findings. Water and sewer are available to service the site. There's existing water main along Jocelyn and Silverbell Road, as well as sanitary sewer along Jocelyn. Both appear to have adequate, you know, pressure and depth and capacity to service the development. We will look for a second connection of the water main. Currently, they're just showing one connection, so for fire flow reasons and reliability, we'll look for a second connection at the time of final PUD. The, one of the questions we had was how they were intending to provide sanitary sewer service with the four detached lots up on Silverbell, and the applicant's already indicated they intend to extend sewer to, to those lots. Stormwater management, we have done a review of their proposed detention system. It does appear to be adequate and meet township requirements for 100-year basins, and they have already taken into consideration that they're in the Brown Road drainage district, which is a, you know, further restricted drainage outlet. As far as traffic is concerned, the applicant is proposing a single boulevard entrance off of Jocelyn Road. We are asking, since this is the only entrance, that we would like to see the boulevard extended through the first intersection. They have indicated they're going to make the roads public, which will be under the review and geometric requirements of the road commission, proposing five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the road. And we are asking that they extend an eight-foot wide safety path along Jocelyn. And lastly, due to the potential isolation of the proposed entrance in the event that a train were to block both crossings of Jocelyn Road, we recommend that some improvements be made to the emergency access route along Jam Road. Currently, as Mr. Flood, Trustee Flood indicated, the current field conditions appear that that's not being maintained as necessary. I believe the Fire Marshal also had similar concerns. Wetlands, we are certainly aware of the need for DEQ permits and Township permits for the wetland impacts they are proposing. The one, one thing that we did notice is that there's not a 25-foot buffer being shown currently as required by Township ordinance. I believe that's going to have pretty significant impact on a lot of the proposed lots and the grading associated with those lots, unless that's waived by the Township. So in our opinion, the, you know, from an engineering standpoint, the concept PUD is in substantial compliance with the Township ordinance as an engineering standards. We just had four items that we wanted the plan approval to include, and those were, one, with a 25-foot wetland buffer, two, the eight-foot wide pathway along Jocelyn, three, the extension of the boulevard through the intersection, and then four, improvements to the emergency access along Jam Road.
Excellent.
Happy to answer any other questions, I mean.
Excellent. Appreciate that. With that, I'll bring it up here to my fellow commissioners, and maybe invite the applicant at this time, so then we'll have him answer questions after we give some further deliberation and so forth, as well have questions for you inevitably from up here. Mr. Simon?
Okay, I'm going to start, but I want to start, first of all, with the parallel plan, you know, because that's what we kind of base everything off of. And of course, you went to the thing, we have to even decide. I'm not convinced, I can't see everything, and I don't think you guys really necessarily looked at it, is what they're showing buildable. You know, if they're showing stuff that looks, like I say, it's hard for me to see because I don't really see the lines that clear. You're building in wetlands and stuff, and we wouldn't normally allow that. So that's the start of that basis is, you know, is what they're showing in that plan, that sets the baseline, you know, for what's there. And they've also, we also have to consider, I know there's this duality thing here, but would we ever approve for, you know, they went, they didn't go with how it's zoned, you know? That would be easiest. And they just went with how they're zoned and how many they could put on here, that would establish a definitely conservative thing. But they're making the assumption that we would approve a rezoning, in essence, to SR, because that's what it says in the master plan. But that's only one issue in the master plan, so it's not a guarantee that you would get that rezoning to get to that higher level. So I have some prob, I'm not really sure that I'm looking at a density plan, this base one, the parallel plan, that looks buildable, and it's because I can't see all the details of, like I said, you're building stuff in there. I have some concerns, I don't really understand in here, I mean, you're putting something in here, too. I don't know where the water comes, you know, that gets over to Judah Lake.
Flat piece of
You know, and are we blocking that flow? You know, it flows. We all know that, right? It flows through. By what we're showing here, are we going to disrupt that? You know, so I would never, again, I'm back to, is that really feasible, you know, what's being shown? Even just in the, in the density plan to start with. So I do have a lot of concerns about that. And little thing, there's a little thing, even though they say 31 units, that plan only shows 30. They skipped a number. So it's only 30, and then like I said, I question whether 30 are even feasible, but that's that. Your name, you got to fix your title on the name. I think it's supposed to be Silverbell Point, not Silverbell Point, just so you know. A little typos, but, but, so, so I have a hard problem, because right where we got to start, when we're looking at the concept, how many units and stuff, I have concerns that, wait, we're not even looking at the base, let alone, then let's go evaluate what we're doing, we get a bonus, you know? And like you said, it's a question right now, is it 20-some, is it 30-some, you know? So, so I really want to start there. I guess I'm kind of talking like consultants, is, you know, that plan that they're showing, is that really, it's supposed to be a doable plan? Is it really? That, you know, lots, when you're building, I don't think we would allow them to build homes in, in wetlands, you know? It wouldn't be something we would approve, so.
Yeah, I pointed out, I think, four items that they have to address to make that a density plan that I could support. So I think there's information not provided, information that isn't consistent with the density plan, and so I, so I think there's three or four items I mentioned, not, and then not to mention the fact that Mud Lake's not shown. And I'd want to make sure they're not, you know, necessarily including, you know, water as part of their lots.
Right.
Which we normally don't allow.
So, you know, like I said, I start there, and then, of course, I'll get into stuff like, I don't really, you know, then I have to reconcile, okay. Sometimes we use that and say, okay, if it were SE, we could, you know, put this many homes on here. But because of the wetlands and stuff, we don't want to put more homes, but we want to use a smaller lot criteria. Still the same number of units, that's, that's really a true, we cluster, you know? Okay, so we established a number of units, but because of this stuff, they don't want to go for a zoning change just because to meet the lot size requirements, they want to build smaller lots. And that's a legit, really, a more legitimate use of the PUD. That's what we really want it to be used for, is for that. So, okay, we'll kind of use the criteria for a smaller lot size, you know, but it's not like we're increasing the density. We've done that on a couple of the PUDs. But, so, I do have a problem right now, I don't really feel I'm starting at the base right. And then, of course, we could get into a whole bunch of things of whether I think the benefits they're listing really deserve even a, from up from that, you know, a density boost from that. I have a lot of concerns that I don't see it, you know? And go that way. I just, I don't. And it is because this area here from Silver, you know, Silverbell around Jocelyn, all the way over to Giddings, and that whole area, we know, and we've done other problems. It's a bad, it's a tough area from a water management standpoint. High, high water, it doesn't take much, you know? Like I say, you, you fill in a few feet of, of wetland anywhere in there, and you got a problem, you know? Let alone you're going to increase the runoff, and supposedly that's what we're going to take care of, but it is, you know? It's like anything, right? Take a, take your finger and put it in a glass of water that's full Take a, take your finger and put it in a glass of water that's full already, you got problems, and we got to make sure that we don't allow something and it's going to create a whole bunch more problems, you know? And it's, and it's like even part of the bonus would be, well, if they're somehow helping to mitigate that thing somehow, you know, even all this, well, then, you know, we got to look at that. That's a definite benefit to help the area, but we're not doing that either, you know? So, anyway, that's, I start there, I have problems, I'm going to say Doug has some, I don't know, Mr. Lang, you wanted to weigh in, that I'm really trying to say is that parallel plan, that base plan, really legit? And I, without more data, I'm looking to you guys, I don't think it is, I'm not convinced it is, so it's kind of like, how do I start when I don't even have the base to me what I think is legit?
Well, as I, I kind of alluded to in my letter, I think the plan right now is lacking the required 25-foot wetland buffer, let alone just the impact of the wetlands, but the buffer that the township requires is not shown, and that would further complicate and put to scrutiny the validity of this parallel plan, I guess, is what.
Right. So, I'm sure there's other questions too, but I start there.
Yes, certainly, in the top two, I mean, we have to address, you know, the interpretation of the master plan, the density in the parallel plan, and then also the, does it meet the basic criteria for eligibility to be considered a planned unit development as well, in my opinion.
Right. That whole thing about what to use for density and all that stuff, like I said, it does get confusing, and to me, I've always looked at it as, show me a plan as zoned, and let me start there, because actually, if I grant the, I am granting a change in zoning, we put more on there than we normally would, you know? But, I realize there's some strange wording in there about, you know, but I also have to say, okay, we can kind of look at that, and they can present that, and that's what they're doing, but I have to say, is that legit? You know, would you be, you know, would I be, you know, let's say it goes the other step, so like I say, with that assumption, what you're assuming is that somehow we would approve a rezoning from SE to SR, you know, and then, when you have that, here's what you could put on there. Well, in this case, I'm not sure that's true, because just because it meets the master plan, although that's one of the heavy hitters on reasons for allowing a rezoning, there are a lot of other considerations, and here, these other considerations weigh pretty heavy, in my mind, you know? But, how could you rezone that? I know it's just on a big map, it says that, but, you know, in this case, there'd be a lot of things I'd be looking at saying, I don't know if I'm going to approve that rezoning because I'd be concerned you can't really support that many places there, no. Granted, it, not, certain parts of it, you know, in this case, the fact, you know, they're proposing, you know, septic or something, that'd be worse, you know, like, no, we can't support that anymore, but, you know, that means that part of it is they got to bring in sewer, and they kind of always do that. Anyway, that's, like I say, I'm, I'm struggling with this, this, that point, let alone then taking it the next step in a concept approval plan of, am I okay with the density boost from there?
Yeah, I think the planning commission has a lot of discretion in determining what to use as that base density.
Right. And, and like I said, that's why we asked for this parallel plan, at least they present something, and then, like I said, what we look for is, we say that's legit, that base plan, is that legit? And then go from there.
Yeah, what is, what is the revision protecting by having a new plan?
Right. Exactly. Especially when it comes to density and stuff like that, so yeah. And like I say, the more common way, when we talk about clustering, is just that. I look at this whole thing, you know, I've got 40 acres, and I have a legit plan I can put out there under how it's zoned, and I can put 40 homes out there. Now, what I want to do in the PUD though is, I want to bring all that down here, that's true clustering. I'm not, any more units total, so from the bigger picture of how it affects everything around, I'm not trying to add more units, I just want to use a different criteria for how big the units are, and then your bonus is, I'm going to preserve all this open space, you know, and do that, because I'm not going to extend things in there. There was benefits to them, you know, you don't have to snake it around and try to extend water and sewer up through this crazy area, but, you know, those are a little more legit, especially the effects on what's going on, you know, around there, so.
So, with, other comments, or do you want to stick there and give, talk about the eligibility for the overall planned unit development, or what we think is the, our points for the density?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Was going to speak a little more to, I guess, that leading topic, I guess, the real benefit of presenting this project as a PUD, although this is in concept form, so there's going to be more questions than answers provided at this point in time. I'm struggling a little bit to find the true benefit of, of the PUD as presented to us tonight. I would echo some of the similar concerns of, you know, wetland limits and, and a couple of these plans, we're, we're discussing wetland fill limit, what does that mean, and, and, you know, there's obviously questions and things that would weigh in by other agencies like the MDEQ. And I'm, I'm struggling just a little bit with understanding the density baseline that we're provided with tonight. You know, I think the PUD can be a really useful tool to, to adverse a difficult site like this one, with the understanding that there's going to be some, some areas where every property isn't the same or cannot fit a typical criteria set forth in our zoning ordinance. You know, I would echo the same concerns about, you know, drainage on the site and things that were brought forth, and I have full faith that with our professional consultants and the reviews that would occur in the next steps, that those items would be addressed or eliminated based on certain regulations that would come forth. I guess for me, I'm, I'm, I would echo the same concerns that Mr. Samuel has brought forth tonight about the density and the number of units that are proposed on this property. It seems like we're bringing forth a lot of density, and the, the true benefit that could be brought forth on, on allowing this project to be a PUD isn't forthright for me at this point in time.
Those comments? Mr. Chris?
Okay, now, recognize that this is a submission of a conceptual plan, and there are a lot of things that could be changed over the resubmissions in terms of issues that were raised tonight, issues that have been raised by the planning commission, but I have a conviction that this is contrary to the principles of what planned unit development is, which is to provide in residential, the clustering of units, the diversification of units, to protect open space, wetlands, woodlands, and what we have presented to us is just a conventional subdivision. It's a 54-lot subdivision as opposed to a planned unit development, and it does not reflect any of the, the sound principles of, of what PUD is, is all about. So, I, I don't know if it's fair to the developer or the, the public to proceed much further on this plan, to try and get some revisions to a subdivision plot plan.
Mr. Reynolds?
And I believe, if this still echoes, and maybe the applicant can speak to this, but you were looking for feedback tonight, you weren't necessarily looking for final deliberation or recommendation tonight, or as, as these discussions, I guess, is a leading question, they're just say, are you looking for feedback to circle back with us, or are you looking for a recommendation tonight? What are your goals tonight after?
I think, as I stated at the onset, we're looking for a collaborative effort, so we recognize that a lot more work needs to be done on it, the input tonight has been valuable, so I think we're, I guess respectfully, would, would ask to be tabled and not have a ruling tonight, because it is our goal to work, continue to work with your, your staff and your consultants to come up with a plan that does work. I've got a couple other comments to make, if this is the time, Mr. Chairman, to make those comments. So, I think Mr. Luan did an excellent job in, in explaining the PUD, the master plan. I think one of the important things about your master plan, and I, I said it in the beginning, and I use the word contradictory, I'm not sure it's contradictory, there's two different avenues on how you can use the master plan, and I think Mr. Luan stated it clearly, and it's in his paragraph two, that if the one to three units per acre was accepted by the planning commission, no density bonus would be required. And then the other way to view it is looking at a parallel plan with a density bonus, and then the subsequent conversation is really focused on, you know, does this merit a density bonus? And I would take the other side, and not to be argumentative, is, you know, we believe that 67 lots could be developed under the master plan, and not really asking for a density bonus, we're asking for less lots that could be developed under one interpretation. And we realize that the interpretation is subjective, and it's not objective, but I also want to focus and not lose sight of the big picture. This is 74 acres, assume for the minute that there were no wetlands on the property. Under the master plan, somebody could come in and ask for 210 lots, or 212, or 224, whatever that equals. And we're focusing on, you know, the wetlands and everything else, we're protecting the wetlands. 54 lots over 74 acres is not a lot, it's not a big traffic contributor, we're protecting the wetlands, we're, we're micro focusing on, does this deserve a density bonus? What I think is important to focus on is, what is the proper development of this plan? How do we collectively, everybody in the room, the planning commission, be proper stewards of this property to create something that is a quality project for the community? And, one of the things that Mr. Luan said, I think that has tremendous merit, is if we scaled back the lots on the perimeter and added approximately another 10 acres to the common area, that, you know, that's significant feedback that we're, we're learning tonight. So, we know we have more work to do, but we want this viewed not that we're asking for a density bonus, that we're asking for a collaborative effort to develop a plan that works and is feasible. We think the PUD is important, we think that this project is a perfect candidate for a PUD. We don't view this as a traditional subdivision. If we were just coming in with a traditional subdivision to meet your master plan, those lot lines would extend all the way to the property edges, you know, they, all the wetland would be contained within lots, and that would be the right under that. What we're proposing is that a significant amount of the wetlands, and we can come back and even show more wetlands, go into a common area, go into a protective conservation easement, and I, I think that's an important consideration. The underlying plan is legitimate, you know, we are asking to fill one acre of, of wetlands, but that would be done under a DEQ permit, and that's not significant when we're preserving 50 acres of wetland. So, I guess we would be respectfully asked to be tabled tonight to allow us to continue to work with your, your consultants and your staff, but get a little bit more of feedback on the density. If you, if we're talking about a density of, of 30 lots, this deal is not feasible and it wouldn't work. If you're talking about scaling back this a little bit to have more preservation of the wetlands, which seem to be the most important topic, you know, we're, we're here to listen and to incorporate that. So, I guess if we can get a little bit more feedback on the actual density, all the issues, other issues you raised are legitimate, they're part of engineering, we can't go and do that work and design all the engineering when we don't have a base understanding on the density.
And so with that, I have to challenge you and so forth, that we don't see the lake nor the high water mark from the 25-foot buffer on the wetlands?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's hard for us to even begin to consider which plan we want to utilize when we don't know exactly what our preferable box is that, you know, you're offering up based on those factors that kind of come into that.
Sure.
So, that's one thing I'm challenging you to come back with, so we can give you a little more feedback exactly on the density, you know, based on that, because that could dramatically change, you know, those parcels on your Far East, you know, what if because of that, those go away, or, you know, change or modify, I think that's the, without that underlying understanding, you know, we can give you some feedback based on this, but I think those are two big factors that we kind of need. Further thoughts on density, comments?
I'm fond of saying, I'm not an architect nor an engineer, so I don't know if that makes me a good planning commissioner or a bad planning commissioner, I don't know. But, sometimes, as you say, we're getting involved in the technicalities. I try to look at the, at the bigger picture. You indicated that under SE that you could, the proper density is 67. Well, that's not exactly true. That would be the expansive definition under SE. The lesser explanation is 22, so it's really from 22 to 67. And also, I just want to add a couple more things. One was about the trees, and I know this is a concept time, and this is
Sure.
We're not talking about a tree survey and things of that nature, but the implication from the, from the folks seemed to say there were lots and lots of big oak trees. From you, you said these are mostly scrub trees, and I have not been on the site, so I don't know. My other concern is the access to the, to the lakes, because if, if, what the, what the, what your neighbors are saying, your potential neighbors are saying, if they've got six or seven or eight people on this lake, and suddenly there's going to be 54 people, I think that's a big deal. And again, it's concept time, I just want to throw that out
Sure.
My thoughts to you.
Sure, thank you. I can just address your one point.
Sure.
We did do a tree survey. The reference I make is that we're not tearing down 1,000 oak trees as was represented, so we did do a tree survey, and it is included, and the majority of them are scrub trees, but as part of what we want to do is preserve landmark and specimen trees as we can, but again, those would be details for further meetings.
Thank you. Were there comments, feedback?
I guess my question to the applicant would be is, how much time are you looking to have to bring forth another plan or revised plan, or?
We would, I guess, like to continue to work with your planning consultant and staff and, and get some further feedback, and submit a plan in the next few weeks and be on the next available agenda as it qualifies. So, I mean, this is, we've been working at it a long time, have spent a lot of money to get this far, and, you know, would propose that we continue the process as fast as we can.
Were there comments, questions, thoughts for the petitioner and/or?
I agree that we need a more detailed plan. I really want to see exactly where the boundaries are with the lake and the high water marks for the lake, and a little better feel for the encro, you know, how far the, the plan, the development would, would encroach on, on the wetlands. I think that's critical, that should have been in this packet now, as far as I'm concerned. I think that the, that the members of the public that are here, they have concerns about the wetlands are completely legit, and we need a, a much better explanation of how those wetlands will be protected moving forward.
Yeah.
And, and I hope that the, the next time we, we see the applicant, he, they can provide us with more detail, and more, and just, and a, a better argument for the public benefit for this PUD, because I'm not, I'm not seeing it, you know, the straight six criteria for approving a PUD, a concept PUD, I'm not seeing it at this point.
I think the density is a big issue, you know, and one or two units isn't going to make a big difference to me, so.
Okay, sure. Allow, the chair, go for it.
And I apologize, because I don't get to see what you guys get to see, but the 74 acres, please tell me that does not include the lake bottom of Mud Lake, because you can't tell, and from what we've seen, we cannot tell.
Mr. Chairman, a topographic survey was submitted with the plan, so the technical details have been submitted, but I think what might be beneficial for the next meeting is rather than everybody reading technical details, that we do a better job in reading technical details, that we do a better job in doing maybe a color illustration of certain things, that that would help show the depiction, but the technical details have been submitted.
Does it show the high water mark as well as what a twenty-five foot buffer would look like per the city ordinance, or the township ordinance and the wetland buffer?
I think it, I think it does, but since it's a point that needs clarification, let us do a better job of highlighting that area, and perhaps use some color to illustrate that.
Understood.
And even that, that's currently, it's, like, normally when we kinda get into the final and stuff, on this one, we'd be looking for a, a full-blown wetlands, you know, environmental report, where they definitely delineate the wetland lines. You know, we can do a preliminary here, but, or have you already done that?
That has been done, that's, the, the wetland boundaries here have been delineated by our wetland consultant.
So then, like I said, sometimes you do that, and, you know, we're, we're at the preliminary, it's not done already. If it is, it's almost like we should see the report, you see, then we can review it. Let our engineers, yep, you know, they got a legit company, you know, looks like they follow all the right rules, so we can probably go with those. Normally, that's more in site plan. Here, we're trying to get some idea whether the concept works, and, you know...
It has been picked up on the survey, but we can have our wetland consultant put on their letterhead as well to, to...
Yeah, well, I...
...corroborate it.
It's just a whole, it's their whole report, you know, they talk about soils, they talk about this, and, and then they put in a map, and we say, yep, you know, they follow the right, this is a legit company, that, you know, that's what we're looking for. So then, that lining that they're putting there, you can, you can pretty much use.
We will provide it, and it's a wetland consultant, and I'm sure both your engineer, planner have worked with for the past twenty years.
And like I say, we don't know it's always required at this point, but it is important, and if you've already had it done, it would be nice to...
If it helps in the process, we're happy to provide it.
It helps the process. And then, even for me, I also wanna make sure, well, again, it could spoil you between concept approval and final, but one of the things I, I am worried about, I need to see, this is kind of important, this flow of water in this area, and make sure I'm not damming it up. You know, in my mind, I'm, I kinda remember where it crosses over, and it sure looks to me like that road is basically creates a dam, you know, it's gonna stop that, well then that means, okay, well, there's some other mitigating factor there that is part of the plan, we're gonna put this big culvert in, and, you know, underneath that road. Right now, it's hard to tell, but from, from a final standpoint, that's pretty significant to me.
Understand.
'Cause there is a flow through here.
Yeah.
And it's just 'cause I'm, I do know the site somewhat, I just can't place myself exactly on your plan versus that, just like it was hard to figure out how far, you're not that far north of Hopefield where your entrance is coming in, you know, it's like, I hope that meets the, even the road commission's standard, how close, but it might be farther than I think, you know. When you can't see it, it's hard to judge, you know, like I said, sometimes I'm not that good at that. That's thirty feet, I can see that, you know, well...
Understood.
You know, driving by there, I can't really tell, you know? But there will be some of that. Obviously, the road commission, again, will come up with that, but, you know, it's a concern too. So, okay.
Mr. Chair, if you would entertain a motion, I'm ready to make one.
Uh, sure.
Move that the planning commission postpone action on PC-2019-06 Silverbell Point Plan Unit Development Concept and Eligibility Plan located on four vacant parcels south of Silverbell Road on the east side of Jocelyn Road, Sidwell 0933-201-001, 0933-128-001, 0928-379-001, 0928-451-001, for plans date stamped received February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen for the following reasons, that the applicant itself can incorporate comments from the public hearing here, heard here tonight for consideration, further deliberation at a future planning commission date.
Thank you. Any other motion? Support? Motion support on discussion from commissioners on the motion?
I just have one question for our director, do we need a date or a timeline?
You can put one, just so it's not out of perpetuity, but, you know...
Would it be acceptable to have sixty days?
Our goals is submitted even sooner than that, but if we could have ninety days, just in case, you know, something comes up.
Okay. So, I'd amend my, my motion to, not to exceed ninety calendar days to appear back in front of us today.
Sir, make, make that ninety days to resubmit, 'cause I don't know your, I don't know what the criterion.
I would accept that.
Again, we'll move as fast as we can.
Okay. amended support on that? Okay. Further discussion on the amended motion? Any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Rose?
Yes?
St. Henry?
Yes.
Tucker?
Shall I pause also?
Yeah. It's for effect, you know?
I know.
We've been here three hours, alright? Still got wit.
Daniel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
With that, takes us a couple more items on our agenda. Item number eight is unfinished business, we have no unfinished business on our agenda this evening. Item number nine is public comments. Any other comments from the public? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, any other comments you may have. All right. Seeing none, next item is our communications, other than just a number of our regular publications, I didn't see anything exemplary or noteworthy in that one. Committee reports, do we have any other site walks of late? I don't believe so, any committee reports under item number eleven. Item number twelve, we do have some further activities and actions. Item number twelve is our future public hearings. And our first item, twelve A, looks like on April third of two thousand nineteen at seven oh five, we have a public hearing scheduled for PC two thousand nineteen dash zero eight, Woodside Vision Foundation, that's located at twenty-five hundred Jocelyn Road, Unit Two, that's on parcel zero-nine-twenty-one-two-five-one-zero-zero-five, and they're putting in for a special land use request for a, I always butcher this, a thrift store and benevolence...
Benevolence.
Benevolence store and thrift store. And we also, item number, so that public hearing again is set for April third at seven oh five. And then, item number twelve, be under our future public hearings, another one, and this is set for April seventeenth at seven oh five, and this is for PC two thousand nineteen dash zero five, Tommy's Car Wash located at eighty-five, or eight-five-one, as well as eight-six-one and eight-seven-one, Brown Road, parcel zero-nine-three-three-three-five-one-zero-two-zero, parcel zero-nine-three-three-three-five-one-oh-two-one, and parcel zero-nine-three-three-three-seven-six-zero-one-zero. And as the name may imply, that's a special land use request for a car wash. So, that's April seventeenth, again, at seven oh five. So, we'll look forward to those public hearings, and then we'll go into my chairman's comments. Thanks for entrusting me to be your chairman again, even though I don't make it some of the meetings as much as I can, so, I guess, thank you, I don't know, should thank you for that, or if it's consult price, I didn't show up, but, I'll try and do my best, continue, and looking forward as we continue to have some advancements, a new talent come to the team, and our actually birthday girls, look forward to work with Deb, and happy birthday, Deb, and welcome aboard, and look forward to working with you. So, well, we'll try and bring you a better birthday gift next time.
Dedication.
With that, I'll send her on the seventh evening, any comments this evening?
I'm fresh out.
Alright.
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure if I'm gonna verbalize this correct or not, but, you know, we are, we are, we are told to use the master plan as a guide. It's not, nothing's set in stone. And I would like to see applicants, especially when it comes to residential developments, to consider that also, and by, and by that, I mean, you know, you could look at a master plan, you could look at the maps, and you could sit there and say, okay, this is what the zoning allows, and let's do the math, and this is what, oh, this is what, you know, you allow at this point, but we're trying to come up with some of the, you know, which is less impact and so forth. Without, you know, the, the master plan does not pick apart every acre of our township in detail with the landscape and what's there. And so to sit there and say, well, we can build, you know, we could, somebody could build so many homes at this size based on the zoning, but you know what, when you actually look at the piece of property, the parcel that they're want, want to develop, is it feasible or not? Is it usable or not? So, don't try to snow us with ideas that we're doing, you know, we're, we're cutting a, a density in half, or by two-thirds, when in reality, we all know that a piece of property, and whether it's what we would discuss tonight, or other pieces of property around township, you know, that, that's really not legit. So, step beyond the master plan, and, and let's compare apples to apples with what's really going on in the piece of property. That, that, I think, is really important.
I do have a comment, I, apparently.
Yeah, so it's moved. I'll allow it.
Commissioner St. Henry, apparently, does wanna go home tonight.
Moving on, any comments, Mr. Gross?
Nothing.
Mr. Steinlo, any comments?
Welcome aboard. Did Lynn tell you you're supposed to bring cookies?
Ah!
That's part of the job, you know, you gotta bring cookies, so, just make sure you knew that, so.
Excellent. Anything else, Ron, or something?
Just, my only comment is, is, you know, appreciate public comment, as always, you know, we're obviously up here as appointed and/or elected officials to look out for our community, so we are human, we do hear your comments, you know, so, we appreciate them for sure, so, you know, please don't look at us as a, as an enemy, we're, we're an ally, so, you know, we're, we're following a rule set, just set forth as maybe your property was developed in the past, so, kinda doing the same thing, so just keep that in mind, and, you know, we're, we're looking out for everyone's best interests, not one individual's.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's comments. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support? And we got support, but there's some comment, I'd like to...
On the motion.
...go ahead, we'll link to the floor here to make sure we don't adjourn here.
I'll make it real quick, I know it's late, just reminding everybody about April tenth is the annual joint public meeting with the Township Board, Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals. I understand the CIA is coming, the consultants, it, it's expanding this year, and if we're all gonna...
The CIA, the police?
Any, any ideas on what you wanna cover? You know, do you wanna talk about the master plan and how we as a township, you know, this is the time when we have everyone in the room to have, have conversations, so please, if you have anything you would like added to the agenda, please, send me an email.
Press, please.
Love the wit this lady.
We have a motion and support, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unafforded nay? Alright, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.